All right, we are ready to get started. Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, and this is the City Council's regular meeting. And I am providing notice that at this meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for discussion on any items listed on the following agenda, discussion with the city's attorneys. And I'm, can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Asland?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Present.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
And my apologies for not doing this ahead of time, but Councilmember Spence, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilmember House, mission statement? And Council, Vice Mayor, land acknowledgement?
Please stand before the Pledge of Allegiance. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up is open call to the public, and this is where it enables the public to address council about any item that is not on tonight's agenda. And to speak during open call to the public, you need to fill out a comment card, which is in the back, and hand it to the clerk. You have three minutes, and there is a timer right here. And because anything you might be speaking to is not on tonight's agenda, we are not allowed to respond, or answer, or ask questions. So, first up, it looks like we have Cara House.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and community. It was brought to our attention earlier today that we have recently had, or have upcoming, three birthdays among our city attorney team. Mr. Sterling Solomon, Mr. Kevin Fensel, and Ms. Christina Rubalcava. And I was hoping that we could join in singing them "Happy Birthday," because I know how much they love being the center of attention. So the names are Sterling, Kevin, and Christina.
And excuse me one moment, I need to get the attorney's opinion on this. Because it's not on the agenda, are we allowed to sing?
Mayor and Council, you're not allowed to engage in a back and forth, so I'm gonna have to put, no, I'm kidding, go right ahead.
Okay. All right, you please lead.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sterling, Kevin, and Christina. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Councilmember House, that was very kind.
Next up, we have DJ.
Hello again. My name's DJ, and today I'm here, I'm not going to be talking about torture, but good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager Greg Clifton, and the greatest police department in Arizona. Page one, first paragraph of Thomas Paine's popular book, Common Sense, mentions, "Society is produced by our wants and governed by our wickedness. The first is the patron, the last a punisher." Flagstaff City Code, Chapter 14, Section 2, Civil Rights states, "It is a policy of the City of Flagstaff to eliminate prejudice and discrimination due to several protected characteristics, including sex, and places of public accommodation and employment." Discrimination is defined as to make a distinction with respect to a protected characteristic. Flagstaff Shelter Services Incorporated and Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona made a distinction with respect to whom they were willing to accommodate with non-congregate transitional housing in 2024. On April 19, 2024, I filed a claim of discrimination against Flagstaff Shelter Services in Coconino Superior Court. The complaint requested injunctive relief in the form of full and equal access to transitional housing regardless of my sex and familial status. When their attorney Barry Williams failed to answer the complaint, failed to conduct a good faith hearing, and lied to the court regarding a good faith certificate, he was this close to being found in contempt of court. I then amended my complaint with a supplemental pleading for damages, as at this time I was already working full-time and yet living like some illegal alien in Flagstaff. Instead of answering the complaint, Barry Williams, Gus Rosenfeld decided to file a motion to dismiss, which granted them a dismissal. Because I was, because that was granted, I was very badly injured. Copy of the complaint will be left on the rear table. What Barry Williams, Gus Rosenfeld, and perhaps Ross Schaefer don't understand about homelessness is that Flagstaff Shelter Services negligence cast the plaintiff in a class of social rejection at a degree unknown to most citizens, prerequisites of not only dignity, but also liberty or shelter, diet, and hygiene. Employing companies, banking institutions, and telephone companies all require a residential address. Companies don't employ homeless people. Without a residential address, employment, a bank account, and a telephone number aren't possible. As a result of this, I was denied full and equal access and opportunity of occupancy to a vacancy that existed specifically for a homeless individual affected by COVID-19. Let's see, I'm running out of time here. I'm someone that never gives up, similar to Donald J. Trump. I mean it. I never give up. After filing the complaint, I was awarded full-time employment at Walmart as a card attendant. I was homeless, working 40 hours a week at Walmart. I woke up in the dirt with bugs crawling on me. I took bird baths and changed in the toilet area of the restroom. And you won't believe what happened, what happened next. But I ran out of time. I'll be here, I'll be here for the next three minutes. I'll tell you what happened next.
Thank you. Melinda Cole?
Good afternoon to the Council and to our Mayor. I think we're all very aware that the current snow season is, our lack of, is creating an extreme fire hazard in Flagstaff. In the paper this morning, it said, "Season to date, we've had 11.2 inches, and normally by this time, we should have 58.8," so nearly 60 inches. And like Mayor Daggett, I was very surprised to hear that bulky trash is being pulled back significantly in our community, right when it's such an essential part of creating fire safety and, you know, eliminating fuels from our, from our property. The Public Works proposal that was mentioned in the paper, saying they would work on, working with the fire department, doing a, you know, citywide cleanup in September, September is too late. Unfortunately, that shows a lack of understanding about the fire season. We are at the most danger prior to the monsoons. In my neighborhood, we had bulky truck pickup a little bit earlier, and I was raking at least around the perimeter of my house, and I was shocked at how dry it was. It was absolutely frightening. If we have to, you know, we have a luxury in Flagstaff, I realize that. Many communities don't have bulky trash pickup as often as we have historically. But, you know, there are places like my brother, who lives in the city in Tucson, and it's not a wildfire danger there. So if we have to reduce the amount of times that bulky trash can come through, I was thinking it would be better to do it, for example, May, June, July, those three months, and then another pickup in, you know, the end of the fall, when people clean up their yards for the winter. But to do it in September, that's going to be too late. So I hope, I hope that we don't, it's not something we just talk about. I hope it's something that we take some advice from our friends in Southern California, and that we continue to aid homeowners in cleaning up yard debris before Flagstaff burns down, before we have a catastrophic fire this season, which unfortunately, the conditions are setting us up for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
Good afternoon. Here we are again, still discussing the dispute between Candace Ryan and Southside Tavern. Six years now. I ask you, what do you picture when you hear, "It's a college bar in downtown Flagstaff." We all know bars close at 2:00 a.m., and most of us sometime during our life, we're at a bar for last call and closing at 2:00 a.m. This is the business model for bars. Ryan states, prior to purchasing her home, she investigated the area, walked around the bar, knew about the proximity of the bar and the NAU campus. Additionally, Ryan said, "If we were aware of the zoning of our house before we purchased it, we would have never purchased it." So they purchased the home. They made a mistake. Now they want the council to change the laws to fix their mistake. There never was a problem until Ryan moved in. Shouldn't she take responsibility for her mistake? At your December meeting, the council agreed to review the city's recent noise study and research what other cities do. But it seems that Ryan and McCarthy will not wait. They are determined to ramrod this until they get what they want. It's wrong to make a new law and target a business because someone made an error in judgment. Today I provided you three documents. First is a memo dated June 2020 stating the Southside business hours are from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Sunday through Thursday, and open till 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. Next, from November of 2023, is from the planning and development, stating that the Southside Tavern is located within the Community Commercial District. This district does allow for this use. The third document advises the council to consider several factors prior to approving a liquor license. After this consideration, the council approved the liquor licenses for Southside. For six years, Ryan has raised her complaints, and during this period, the council approved all applications for Southside. The bar has been located on San Francisco Street with no problems. Please visit the bars, including Southside Tavern. Take note of their hours and noise levels. Don't make decisions solely based on these allegations. Get the facts. I understand Ryan's issue, but it's self-inflicted. It is wrong to make legal decisions to target one business because of Ryan's mistake. Everything was fine, and there were no problems prior to her waging this war against the Southside Tavern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor, and welcome, Councilmember Garcia and Spence. And thank you for my mom for showing up today to help me talk about this. I apologize I wasn't here for the last discussion. I didn't expect this issue to come up so soon. It's only been a couple of months, and I just didn't really think that this would progress that fastly to come back here. But I'd like to talk about some of the people and some of the issues that came up during that. First, McCarthy is still going on about this, shows that he's been targeting the Southside Tavern for a very long time. Says that Candace investigated the property prior to buying it, and I supplied a letter that shows that she actually didn't. She did not check the zoning, or she said she wouldn't have bought it. In, in, oops. So that, that made me think, has he been emailing information for years telling her what to do at council? Because I have public records requests that shows that he's been emailing her what to say to you, and what to make you think that she's in the right in this. Blake Witten also stopped advertising for his, to rent his house months ago. And Candace called this a low-income neighborhood. He's charging $2,200 a month and wants $9,000 upfront to rent it in a low-income neighborhood. It seems pretty conflicting there. What if I told you in November, we had someone call the place, and Ryan answered the phone? Ryan was the one renting it, and she said there was a noise issue, and no one wanted to rent it? So, there's a lot going on here. You're being played, and they're using you as a free defense. The city has probably already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm guessing, in this matter over the last six years. In the last meeting, we presumed an exemption zone for the DBA. I've joined the DBA since, and a lot of other businesses south of the tracks have as well. The goal is for the DBA zone to go south of the tracks. What happens when this happens? Are we included in that exemption zone that was proposed? What stops competitors from calling the police on each other if they have over five people making noise at any business in town if this goes through? The history of Southside was mentioned. I hope you take another look at all the maps I provided. Up until about 30 years ago, this neighborhood was filled with bars, nightclubs, and dance halls. I still have these posted in the, I still have these posted in my hallway to honor the historic Southside in my bar right now. I also provide a documentation of a noise-measuring device that will monitor noise levels near our property line 24/7 hours a day, and backup all data to a dating logging software. I've included the device in an invoice to show you how seriously I'm taking this and how much it costs me. It will also give me warnings when the noise is above a certain level, and we can adjust as needed. This data, however, might be skewed due to the train, car traffic, and my neighbor's dog's barking all day that are louder than my bar currently. But I'm confident that this will show that I am one of the quietest bars in town. I ask you if you amend this ordinance, how will losing my business be rectified? The council has made it clear that this is all related to me. I've done nothing wrong but run my business the best way I could, and have helped businesses all over the Southside community. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Happy birthday, Sterling. My name is Colleen Maring. I'm the Chief People Officer and General Counsel at Northern Arizona Healthcare, and wanted to share two things today. One, to celebrate and express great gratitude to our employees and our physicians, especially surgeons and ER doctors, who helped us through another very significant national crisis in healthcare, but one that didn't get a lot of press. When Hurricane Helene hit the East Coast in September, it severely damaged a plant run by Baxter, which supplies a great majority of the sterile IV fluids used in healthcare facilities across the nation. So overnight, we and every other hospital in America started receiving drastically smaller shipments of fluids, and sometimes didn't know when we would receive our next shipment of fluid. They're critical in caring for patients in the ER, on the floors, and especially in surgery, as well as being prepared to handle traumas. We actually came through that crisis without delaying a single surgery, without canceling a single surgery, without deferring a single patient, and even sharing fluids with Little Colorado Medical Center when they went down to less than a day of supply on hand. And truly, the only reason we were able to do that is our phenomenal team, who learned so much through COVID. We were able to monitor in real time exactly how many bags of fluids and different types of fluids we had. And through the leadership of our surgeons and our ER providers, change protocols so that we could still safely and appropriately care for patients without using the same volume of fluids that we've all used historically in medicine. And so we're very happy to announce that, as of last week, we are officially out of this crisis. Baxter is shipping 100% of fluids to, at least to us, I think to all hospitals, I shouldn't speak for everyone, but we are thrilled to be back to normal. But we've learned a lot, and super proud of our employees and our providers, who learned so much during COVID, being able to apply that and really make a crisis not a crisis. And then the other thing, I just wanted to give public thanks to some of our partners. I spoke a couple months ago about our Mason Award winners, our Nurse and Tech of the Year, some of our other employees who demonstrate our values at NIH. And one really exciting one you're going to see around town, but first, 1AY Credit Union helped us provide cash gifts to all of those winners. You can read about all those winners in the Daily Sun this Saturday, thanks to a special section they're going to run. And hopefully, you will see around town some Toyota Tacomas wrapped in Nurse and Tech of the Year from Finley, who's inspired by the Educator of the Year, provided these award winners with a lease for a year of a truck. So thank you to our partners, and especially our amazing employees and providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I want to talk about signage. Recently, the signage has changed in Flagstaff, and it's changed throughout the whole country. It's uppercase lowercase for people like me, who are, let's say, older, that can read the signs. Now, I'm in my 70s. I've been reading signs for over 60 years. I've never had a problem. So, the problem I have with Flagstaff signs is I live on East Hamburg. So you would think that it would be an uppercase E, period, uppercase H, E-M-B-E-R-G, but it's not. It's uppercase H, E-M-B-R-G. So, all the streets in Swiss Manor have had their prefixes taken out, whether it's north or east. And then, in the lowercase, half the size of the lowercase is the street designation, whether it's street, way, drive. And then underneath it is the direction, east, period, end, period, and then the house numbers. So, for somebody like myself, if you're trying to change the signage to make it easier for reads, you wouldn't make it smaller case. But as far as the council or city to do, I wouldn't change the signs. I don't want to spend any good money after bad money and just let it go as is. But I'm sort of questioning how that design came up, and who approved it. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Wiley.
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 My apologies.
It might be my handwriting.
It might be.
Yeah, probably is. Good afternoon, Mayor, and Vice Mayor and Council, and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Sam Wiley, and I'm the Resilience Hub Specialist at the Sustainability Office. And I am here today to share details on our upcoming Emergency Preparedness Workshop Series, which will be held at two of Flagstaff's resilience hubs, the Market of Dreams and the Murdoch Center. These workshops are a direct response to the needs and concerns raised by our community members, and informed by the input we've received from you as council members, and shaping our city's approach to resilience, and seeing where the resilience hubs can fit into the broader picture of that work. Through ongoing conversations with neighborhood groups and the emergency management teams at the city and the county, we structured these, the series to address both the immediate and long-term emergency preparedness needs within Flagstaff. These workshops are designed to be hands-on, accessible, and directly beneficial to Flagstaff residents. We want folks to come in and learn, but also leave with, with resources in hand that they can use. Here's a quick overview of what we have planned. We have DIY HEPA filter workshops, helping residents build low-cost HEPA filters for clean indoor air. These will be led by Noah Baker from the Flagstaff Fire Department. We'll be hosting the first one of those this weekend, on the 22nd, at noon at the Market of Dreams. And we'll be hosting one later on in April, on the 11th, at the Murdoch Center. We'll also be doing Ready, Set, Go workshops on March 10th and 11th at the Murdoch Center and the Market of Dreams, covering evacuation readiness, the county's emergency notification system, and evacuation zones around town. We'll also be using that as an opportunity to hand out prepared Ready, Set, Go kits with the kinds of supplies that you might need to grab quickly when you need to evacuate your home. We'll be following that up with another partnership with the Fire Department on a defensible space workshop in late March, teaching homeowners how to protect properties from wildfire threats. And then financial preparedness for emergencies in April, on the 14th and 15th. These will offer strategies for economic recovery at the individual and community level after crises. The final workshop that we'll be offering is a series, within this series, called the Neighborhood Resilience Leaders Workshop Series. And those will be on Thursday evenings from April 3rd through May 8th. And this is going to be a cohort-based program for community members to become local resilience leaders at the neighborhood or the block level, with a focus on emergency preparedness, communication, and recovery. These efforts, yeah, thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Sam. And staff, I forgot to mention, can someone get back to Mr. O'Keefe about the signage and his contact information that's on this card?
Awesome. Thank you, Council, for your time. I'm here to discuss a dumpster issue located on the South Side here. I'm a resident at 14 East Benton. The location of the dumpster is in the alley behind my residence. To give you a little history, we have been in contact, I know we've had emails. We're here today to reiterate our current, that the current location of the dumpster and situation is untenable. The dumpster was moved from its historic location to accommodate a portion of a mural the city approved. And the mural was designed ironically by a previously mentioned Southside resident to facilitate her ultimate goal of having the dumpster moved away from her residence, ironically. It was moved at the start of the year, and we were told this is a temporary move while a solution was found. We've been in contact with Solid Waste, and we've been informed by them that they were told to further table the solution for now. And so, six weeks later, this dumpster continues to sit less than 20 feet outside our seven-year-old daughter's window, while the trash comes and collects at between 6:00 a.m. and 7:30 a.m. almost every morning. Furthermore, the dumpster sits partially on private property without the approval of the private property owner, while the other side obstructs the public right-of-way in the alley, improving impediments to emergency services. Also, it cannot be dumped efficiently because of overhead electrical wires, causing the dump truck to have to back up approximately 20 feet idle next to our house directly out idle next to our house directly outside our windows, perform a dump, pull it forward, then pull forward and dump again, which is obviously a very large public, you know, it's a danger to the public, a large truck backing up. Furthermore, the truck cannot access the dumpster without crossing private property and infringing on the private property owners that own the property there. They have not granted access for the public works to be able to access that dumpster across their private property. When the dump truck has been unable to access the dumpster due to the property owners utilizing their properties, the trash has piled up for days, and this has created a public health nuisance. We're here to find solutions with you. I have submitted a proposal to the council that would place the dumpster solely on city property without obstructing any right-of-ways for emergency vehicles or degrading quality of life. I hope you'll consider the solution. And I invite you guys to contact us. You have my contact and/or visit our location to see things on site, and hopefully, we can come to a solution. I'm not sure if I can submit paperwork, but I do have parcel maps of where it's currently located on private property, proposed locations. I have photos of trash piling up for days outside my daughter's window. And I have further photos I could submit. So can I submit these to the city clerk?
Yes. Do you want them directly to you, or do you want them back to Annie? All right. Thank you. All right, next up, we have council liaison reports. And I'm going to start with Councilmember Matthews.
I have nothing today.
Councilmember Garcia?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
Lots of budget stuff for all of us in the last several weeks. Also, I attended the Metro Plan Strategic Advance last Tuesday morning. It was a get-together over at ADOT. It's a nice facility out there. And I know Vice Mayor Sweet is the chair of that. Maybe she has a little bit more to share about it. Oh, you did share about it last week? Okay. There's not too much to report there. We got into teams and strategized a little bit to prioritize grant opportunities for the city of Flagstaff in terms of mobility and street projects. That's really about it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So for this week, on Wednesday, there's a mountain line meeting, 10 to 12, out at the Caspar location. Thursday, there's a Water Commission meeting, 4 to 6, here in Chambers. And an update on BPAC. At the last meeting, we approved a new color for a sculpture that's out at the airport called Motion. And the new color will be true blue, coming soon.
Councilmember House?
For the Housing Commission, we recently had a robust, very interesting conversation on a proposed resolution that will be coming to council in March. And for the Commission on Diversity Awareness, they are meeting tomorrow and continuing conversations on proclamations, the Rainbow Crosswalk proposal, and other ongoing conversations with that commission. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Spence?
No liaison report today.
And I have just one, and that is that the Flagstaff Housing Authority meets on Thursday morning from 9:00 to 10:30, and that can be accessed online. All right. Moving down to appointments. First up, we have an appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission. And that is going to be made by Vice Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So a little background. I realize we typically like to have more than one applicant when we do appointments. However, we have struggled to get applications for this appointment. So I was able to talk with the applicant over the phone and asked a few questions. And he also is very involved in our community. And I do believe his knowledge and background in Flagstaff will be valuable to this commission. So with that, I would like to move that we appoint Jesse Dominguez to a Historic Property Owner position on the Heritage Preservation Commission to a term expiring December 2026.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Jesse already has keys to the city, I believe, so this seems like a very natural appointment for him.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Moving down to B, which is the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living, a commission very near and dear to my heart. We have a term expiring March 2027 and a term expiring March 2028. So please let us know which one you are appointing to. And the first appointment is from Councilmember Spence.
Could I defer to Councilmember Aslan to go first?
Certainly. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you. Well, I do have two choices set up here. I'm going to go ahead and renominate Sarah Dorman, who is a current commissioner, to continue on with the commission. I just think a little bit of that longevity and institutional knowledge is important for each of these commissions. And I will do that for the term expiring in March 2027, which is the shorter of the two terms.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Council.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, Councilmember Spence on the term expiring March 2028.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a difficult decision to choose one out of five or six applicants. The Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living has had some very knowledgeable and experienced people submit their statement of interest in serving. But after talking to all of the applicants, I have chosen Rashira Dobson, D-O-P-S-O-N, as the commissioner for the term expiring March 2028.
I'll second that. She was my other choice.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right. Congratulations to all of our appointees. Next up, we have Consent Agenda. All matters under the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine. Unless a member of City Council expresses a desire at the meeting to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for discussion, the Consent Agenda will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by council are budgeted items. Now, we do have public comment on Item 7D. So I am going to pull that and then entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Items A, B, C, E, F, G. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I am going to take public comment on Item D. And that is consideration and approval of contract. It's a cooperative purchase contract with Phil Long Ford of Denver. And our commenter is Kelly Cullen.
Hello, I'm Kelly Cullen, 1602 Northeast Street, Flagstaff, Arizona. I have no stake in this purchase. However, I want to express my concerns regarding Flagstaff's ongoing practice of not purchasing locally. In my opinion, the city should exhaust all local resources prior to any purchase, or at least give the local businesses a chance to quote. I know that last year, the city of Flag would not let my business quote on millions of dollars worth of work without even providing decent reasoning as to why not. This ongoing practice is just unacceptable. Take this purchase, for instance, Consent Item 7D. The city is purchasing three Ford pickups using a Texas-based procurement system in which a dealership out of Colorado wins the quote. You just can't try harder to shop elsewhere. Just the environmental aspect alone of shuffling these cars from out of the state should be enough to table this purchase. I know for a fact, the Ford dealership, it's just a few blocks up Ashman Street right here. I know they can provide the same trucks and most likely a cost savings. It's my understanding these trucks were initially requested about four months ago, so that there was plenty of time to order locally. And the old excuse of, oh, we just need these vehicles right away or everything's going to crumble, is a terrible excuse to be buying stuff on. It should not be accepted anymore. Why should the city of Flagstaff buy local? Well, it creates jobs. It keeps the money in the community. It reduces the environmental impacts. It provides for better customer service. And buying locally ensures that the companies involved are paying the Flagstaff wage. Look, we live in a community where the median house cost is $725,000. And it's just amazing that the city of Flagstaff procurement will go out of their way to avoid purchasing locally, which just makes our city's high costs less attainable for everyone. Now, please correct this issue or continue to watch more doors shutter and the job market dwindle. As a longtime local Flagstaff business owner, I strongly recommend that you table this purchase today and get some local involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering if staff... Yes, I see some staff.
Good evening, councilmembers. So let me go ahead and do a little bit of explaining on these purchases. So we did go and speak to the local dealer here. We actually talked to two different dealers. We talked to the Ford and Chevrolet. With these Fords, they are going to the Fire Department. They are specialized units, so they're a Ford F-150 responder. So what that means is they're built for public safety. Public safety means that they come with some different types of characteristics. When we talked to Babett Ford, they were not able to produce those vehicles, and they did not have them on the lot. So we weren't going to be able to buy them right off of the lot. We would have to order them and purchase them. Typically, it takes about six months to a year to get those ordered. There's also ordering banks. So those ordering banks are only open at various times of the year. So October usually being one. And then we did go over to Chevrolet and ask them. However, Chevrolet does not make a truck that is an SSV, so Special Services Vehicle, which means that it's going to be strictly for public safety use. So in turn, we contacted the company out of Colorado. They are a large company that they're able to purchase above, and they have plenty of those on the lot. So when we contacted them, they said, yes, we have three of them available. And in order for the Fire Department to have these vehicles quickly, they needed them. I think we were talking about this earlier, but they had a vehicle that was in a collision on I-40. They also had a vehicle that had engine failure. So they need some vehicles on the road. That is why we have considered purchasing these vehicles. And they were fair, and we did do the proper procurement for it. So we did reach out to the local dealerships.
Thank you. And what is a purchase bank?
Ordering bank. So normally with government fleet purchasing, you typically don't go to the lot and buy a vehicle. You order them in advance. So they'll be ordered in October. So for like the police vehicles, Ford has an ordering bank open in October, and they will actually cut off a limit of how much the manufacturer can actually build. So it's like a do-or-die type of situation of we all have to get in our orders in. And then what Ford or Chevrolet will do is they'll put that in for a build cycle at the manufacturing plant. So they'll actually build, you know, 600,000 of these vehicles for all the different types of agencies. So usually typically, actually just talked to Ford today, but they will only open up from July and have it open until October, and then they close. October, after they close in October, then they're building vehicles. So there's no ordering. And then so with this dealership in Colorado, they actually ordered above the bank order. So say they have, just say they have 200 vehicles on order from different agencies. What they'll do is they'll actually order like 100 more or 50 more. So in the event that another agency needs them, we can call and they'll have them on the lot, just because that is, they're a big company. They're based out of Colorado and New Mexico as well.
Thank you. And we have a comment and a question. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally, since it's a Consent Agenda item topic, I wouldn't speak about this. But I just wanted to assure the public that we are doing our due diligence. I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure it reflects on many of the councilmembers up here, if not all of them. You know, I went out and taught, even though it's, we're really policymakers here. I went and called not just the people in Flagstaff, but also many places in the state, hoping that we could get a better, a closer option, even though I knew it was a little too late for that. I just wanted to get above and ahead of things. And what I found out was that the procurement process that you followed was really the only way to procure this vehicle. And that's what I learned as a council member. So I'm happy that you did the work that you did. One quick question is, so everybody has the opportunity to sign up for the procurement process. Is that correct?
Yes.
Including locals?
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I align with Mr. Collins's concerns about, you know, past history with our procurement. So I appreciate him bringing that up because we want to always, when we can, shop local and support our local businesses. So I'm going to make the assumption that, like if I go and buy a vehicle and they don't have it on their lot, they can call and, you know, have it moved over to their lot. That is not possible with these specialized vehicles?
No, it is a fun process, not really. But it is a process, right? And so if there is on the lot, we also have a procurement process that we have to follow. So we have, we can't just, like a normal consumer can just go out and call the bank and have that check. We have to come to City Council. We have to get with procurement. So I just dealt with this, actually, with the police trafficking and buying them their used vehicles. It took a lot of work to be able for them to hold that vehicle. I gave them my right pinky, my right pinky, this one, and said, please hold these two vehicles because they have sales that they have to, you know, they have their quotas that they have to meet. Government procurement is completely different. So we do put the request out for bid. We do want to go out to have locals do it. But typically, it's really hard to be able to go off and buy off the lot.
And I appreciate you answering those questions and being transparent and explaining to us that don't live in your space, the process, because we don't want, we want to be insured that when we can, we buy locally. So thank you.
Yeah, would love to buy local if we can, and the opportunity's there. Our fleet manager does a great job as far as reaching out to them and checking to make sure, hey, by any chance, are you going to be able, are you able to have these? With these Ford responders, our fleet manager did contact Babett Ford, and they didn't have the exact vehicle. So there's specifications that we have to have in order for the Fire Department to, you know, they have needs of what that vehicle needs to do, so.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Consent Item D.
I'll second.
We do have two more commenters, so I'll take them when we do. We do have two more commenters, so I'll take them when we do discussion. So any discussion? Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer, for all your, all the fun work that you do for us at the city. My, my comment is mostly to Kelly. I want to, I have a lot of gratitude for you coming to council and speaking to us. It must feel kind of lonely getting up there and speaking truth to power, standing in the breach the way you do. I invite you to continue doing that when you see these procurement issues come up. I know that there has been some movement, and I think that your influence has helped nudge things along. Patrick, I'm wondering if you could just come up and very briefly, I invite you to be succinct, because I know we have a lot of presentations this evening, and just give me an update, give us all an update on how the waiting is going for scoring locally and what the, what the calendar looks like for, for all that stuff coming through.
Certainly. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Patrick Brown, Purchasing Director. So there's a timing issue with the dealerships. We're having a real hard time with dealerships. They won't hold anything for us. We're not special. But, so we have to do, to do a procurement, we, a regular procurement, put it on a street, bid it and get it in. By the time we get done with it, they may not have it on the lot, and then we'll have to wait. And that was a problem in the past, having long lead times to get vehicles in here that we need replacements, fire department. So we have resorted to cooperatives whenever the instance comes up that it's urgent, like replacing fire department vehicles that are in dire need. We don't just automatically go to cooperatives and buy vehicles. I think a few council meetings back, you may have saw some RAV4s we went out to bid with, and a local did win that bid, and we awarded it to them. So we do that in every instance that we can. But if the, there's an instance where there's an urgent need, public safety is big on that, then we have to look at other strategic ways of accommodating our public safety people so that the community's safe. So, you know, long, long lead times.
I was asking about the waiting for local. When you're going through the procurement process, a score is given, right?
Right. So in, not in a bidding process, in the bidding process, it's a, the dollar amount is what wins that bid. So we'll put it out, and we'll say, sharpen your pencils and give us a good price on these vehicles. That's what you saw a couple of weeks ago. There may be instances in the future where purchasing in cooperation with fleet, we're going to go out with some solicitations to get a number of dealerships onboard, almost like a, an on-call for vehicles, if you will. But those are not the specialized vehicles. Those are when we need to replace vehicles, carpool vehicles, water services, public works, that kind of thing. So we'll be trying to get something a little bit more diligent in place so we can speed up that process. As far as scoring goes, that's where we'll be scoring because we want to find somebody who is responsive to our delivery needs. We'll have that in there and say, how fast can you deliver these once we order it? What we're doing is we're going into a contract with these dealers to say, hey, we're going to do business with you when we have vehicle needs, and you're going to have vehicles for us when we need those vehicles. But we need to get there. We still need to develop some standards and specifications of those vehicles that we use primarily at the city. Did that answer your question, councilmember?
And please, and I know you will, correct me if I'm wrong, but the legislature does not allow us to give local preference in our procurement. Is that correct?
So I'm going to say that is correct, looking over at Sterling, but yes, that is correct. We cannot show local preference because it eliminates the competition. It should be a fair and open competition to everybody. So when we solicit a Ford, some vehicles, or whatever we want to buy, it has to go out publicly to everybody, and everybody has the right to submit a proposal or a bid of their products or services for our consideration so that we can get the best price and the best quality for the city.
But we can put in questions about, we've been talking about housing and our carbon, our carbon neutrality plan, and it sounds like also delivery time.
Right. Delivery time can be a big factor in the decision of awarding a bid. So if we have a delivery time that we put into a bid, and we're saying we want it within a month or two months, and if they say it's going to be eight to 12 months out, but we have bidders that can do that, but they're higher than these other ones, preference would go to that because they're being responsive to our needs. And you're correct, we're working on policy right now and code to support our climate action and sustainability.
Thank you. So I'm going to jump to Sterling, and then to Councilmember Spence, and then to Vice Mayor.
Mayor and Council, thank you. And Patrick has done a great job of explaining from a very high level the nuances that are involved, if you will, when it comes to purchasing and purchasing from a local entity as opposed to the broader realm. That said, if there are any more specifics on that, I would recommend we could go into executive session to talk about that. I don't think it's necessary today, but maybe one to put on the calendar for the future. We could refresh the council on what can and can't happen with respect to that from a legal perspective.
Thank you. And thank you, Patrick.
And thank you. And Mayor, if I may, I also want to add that Emily Markell in my office has been diligent about going out to the local dealerships and encouraging them and poking them to get onto a cooperative as well. The state is a great one to get onto. So we've been doing some footwork in that department as well.
Thank you. I know that we all appreciate that. Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like just to follow up on the carbon neutrality plan. And for everybody's awareness, the city does have a criteria for selecting electric vehicles over internal combustion engines, engine vehicles. And I would like to ask staff the question, does Ford make any F-150 Lightning, the EVs, that meet the Special Service Vehicle criteria?
They do not, not for, so the Ford F-150 responders is specifically for public safety. They do make an F-150 Lightning, but it does not meet the needs and standards for public safety. But we do, however, have a police chief and a sergeant driving an F-150 Lightning right now.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just real quick, I wanted to thank the public commenter for coming up and speaking today and for staff and your thorough answer. And, you know, since I've been on council, we've had this discussion many times, and I think it is important that we keep having it. Being a local supporter is important for those of us here in Flagstaff, and I appreciate how much we value it within the organization and for our community. Thank you.
All right. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone. Great questions. Moving down, Item 8, Routine Items. 8A is Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-02 and Ordinance 2025-01. And as you will recall, we had the discussion about this previously and the presentation from staff. So unless council has any additional questions, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Matthews.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number 2025-02 and Ordinance Number 2025-01.
It's just the ordinance, the motion to approve the, or adopt, sorry, the ordinance and, or the resolution first and then the ordinance separately. Sorry. Thank you.
So I'll just do the move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-02.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk?
I don't have anything to read on this one, but for the next motion.
Oh, that must be a, okay. Can I get a motion on, my apologies, can I get a motion on reading the ordinance?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we read Ordinance Number 2025-01 by title only for the first time.
Final, it's the final.
I'll second.
Final time.
Final time.
Correct.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10, Flagstaff Zoning Code, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled PZ-24-00216-Resource Protection Standards Applicability, Providing for Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Severability, Authority for Clerical Corrections, and Establishing an Effective Date.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, moving down to B, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-03 and Ordinance 2025-02. And like the previous item, we discussed this at a past meeting, so I will, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'd like to adopt the Resolution Number 2025-03.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then can we get a motion to read Ordinance 2025-02 by title only for the final time?
Mayor, I'll move to read Ordinance Number 2025-02 by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10, Flagstaff Zoning Code, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled PZ-24-00217-Urban Farmland Use, Providing for Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Severability, Authority for Clerical Corrections, and Establishing an Effective Date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, we're moving down to our regular agenda, Item 9A, Consideration and Acceptance. Oh, and thank you, Tiffany. Consideration and Acceptance of Highest Bids for Solicitations for the Sale of Real Property. Hello, Bryce.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bryce Doty, your real estate manager. This afternoon, I'm asking you to accept two bids. We've, well, first of all, let me apologize because I did not put this presentation in your packet. I was gently admonished of that this morning. Thank you, Stacy. Yeah, it was very gentle. Anyway, so I apologize for not giving you kind of a G or reference of where we're at in the world here. But we're in Doni Park. For some reason, a long time ago, the city had 540 acres out here. It was actually the old airport before Polium. And those was eventually sold and sold and sold, and the city had two lots left. Well, on this northern lot up here, we leased that land to a shooting range, and there was some environmental cleanup that needed to happen. And the funds were used from the self-insured trust to do the environmental cleanup. In exchange for that, these two parcels were considered as assets of the self-insured trust. And so they've been assets of the self-insured trust ever since that happened. And ever since that happened, we've been waiting to kind of cash in on them and convert them from real property to just assets of the self-insured trust. We went out to bid a couple of years ago. We did not receive really any bids of significance, so we rejected those last year with direction from council to go out for bids again. We went out for bids again. We contracted with a local realtor to market it, to list it on MLS, try to get some more, get some more interest on them. We did receive two bids, one bid each on these, and they were above our appraised values. And so the motion today is to approve those bids, if you have any questions about that. And then we also negotiated with that winning bidder for some acceptable purchase agreements. And those, really, they provide them the opportunity to do some rezoning time with the county. So they did contact the county and said, hey, we would be interested in rezoning these. Right now, they're currently zoned for a minimum of 2.5 acre lots, and so they would be looking to decrease that. I think the county suggested that they might support one acre density in there. So it might be an opportunity to get additional housing stock in the community by letting them have a larger kind of due diligence period, an entitlement period. So that's what we're doing today. Any questions?
And just to restate, because I asked this question and was told no, that the proceeds, 100% of the proceeds have to go to the trust, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And my question was, can the money be set aside for affordable housing specifically? But they cannot. So Councilmember House.
That actually was my question, Mayor, so thank you very much, and thank you for answering that.
Councilmember Garcia.
It's, it's bittersweet to see this land go. As a child, it kept a lot of us out of a lot of trouble by letting us ride our motocross bikes down there. There was a professional-grade track that was basically just open for the public at any time. So it's sad to see it go, but I understand that we're moving on and better things will be here to come. And plus, that old site kind of turned into something else for the meantime. My question is, is this an adequate return on the investment that was made for this property due to inflation and everything with the times?
It depends on how you view the time value of money. I think back in the, when we did the environmental cleanup, the cost of that was about $1.1 million. The proceeds of these are going to be about 1.3, 1.4. So yes, we made money, but, you know, if you stuck that in a CD, you'd be better off, but.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Bryce?
I'll entertain a motion to accept the bid. And if you could name each solicitation number in your motion, we can do one motion, right? Okay.
Mayor, I would like to move that the city accept the bid for Solicitation Number 2025-30 for $664,000 and to accept the bid for Solicitation Number 2025-31 for $823,000. Period.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you.
Down to B, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-09 and Ordinance Number And this is regarding private pressure wastewater mains and services. We also received a presentation about this. Are there any additional questions? Then I will entertain a motion to read the resolution by title only.
I move that we read Resolution Number 2025-09 by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled 2025 Pressure Wastewater Code Amendment.
Thank you. And a motion to read the ordinance by title only for the first time?
I move that we read Ordinance Number 2025-03 by title only for the first time.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 13-09-002-0012, Private Pressure Wastewater Mains and Services, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2025-Pressure Wastewater Code Amendment, Providing for Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, Severability, Authority for Clerical Corrections, and Establishing an Effective Date. providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. All right, down to discussion items. A is a discussion on reclaimed water rates following council's request from the April 2nd, 2024 council meeting.
Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers, Erin Young. I'm the Water Resources Section Director. And tonight, we are in front of you, following...let me get my notes. You may recall in 2024, March and April 2024, when we were working on the water and wastewater and reclaimed water rates, that when it came time to discussing how to set reclaimed water rates and whether to deviate from our current policy, you may recall asking staff to take this up with the Water Commission and come back to City Council with recommendation or considerations to make when setting reclaimed water rates. So tonight, the intent of our presentation is to provide a follow-up from the discussions we had through the Water Commission and a special work group that they assembled comprised of reclaimed water customers, as well as just background information on the reclaimed water system that we felt relevant for...to share with you all, and recognizing we have some new council members, just so that you can make the...an informed...provide informed direction to staff tonight. So with that, I will start the presentation. I would like to recognize that we do have some on-the-work group here tonight. We have Aspen Valley and Flagstaff...
Golf Maintenance.
Golf Maintenance Company, so Flagstaff Golf Maintenance, Overseas Continental, and Aspen Valley Maintenance Programs. We have Rob Vane, he is a Water Commissioner, he is online, he participated in the work group. I don't see anyone else from the work group other than staff. We had Lee Williams, our Acting Director, Shannon Jones, our former Director, and Shannon Anderson. Also recognizing that we had guidance from Vice Mayor Sweet during this process, and would like to thank everyone for their involvement.
And we have Mr. Bills in the audience as well.
You didn't tell me you were here, hi. Yes, we have Mr. Bills as well, so...and Mr. Bills is on the Water Commission. So, when we comprised our staff summary, we took the recommendation from the work group. And that recommendation is to explore water conservation and/or reclaimed water demand smoothing actions. Now, we'll talk a little about...a little about what that means. And direct staff to include a cost-of-service-based analysis in the next rate study. The next rate study for reclaimed is scheduled for January 26th, so a year from now. That rate study is not as scary as what we just went through, but it's a check-in. So we go through a formal financial check-in. Are we collecting revenues as anticipated? We'll double-check the assumptions made and just see if we're on track. With that, we could add a cost-of-service study for reclaimed. Another option would not...would be to not take any action now. We can monitor the customer's response to rate increases. And just as a reminder, the reclaimed water rates are set as a percentage of the potable rate. You adopted an 8.5% increase on water rates for five years, so that's 8.5% each year. Right now, our revenues are around $800,000 a year on reclaimed. By year five, that would be $1.2 million if we stick on that projection. So that's a 50% increase in our revenues. Or you could ask us to take another direction. So tonight, we'll review the topic and why we're bringing this to City Council. We'll review what is reclaimed water, what is the future of reclaimed water in Arizona, maybe for Flagstaff. We'll review our existing reclaimed water policy. We do have a water policy, council adopted water policies. There's a document on our website, I have two copies, if you'd like a hard copy, that's all I could find, but they were adopted by City Council in 2014. We'll talk about just what the existing reclaimed water rates are. And then we'll launch into our work group discussion, a timeline of the discussion, who is involved, the recommendation from that work group, and then we can launch into any questions and discussion that you'd like to have. What is reclaimed water? It is recycled wastewater from our community. We have two wastewater treatment plants. We have...our Rio to Flag plant was actually constructed in the mid-1990s for the sole purpose of providing reclaimed water to the larger users in the Flagstaff area. We also have, we call it the end-of-the-line wastewater treatment plant at Wildcat Hill, northeast of the mall, and that takes liquids and solids. So solids are not treated at the Rio to Flag plant that's near...on Babbitt Drive, near Sam's Club. They pass the solids through to the end-of-the-line plant. The permits for the reclaimed water system and our customers are administered through ADEQ. And our Regulatory Compliance Office, Jolene Montoya, she oversees the agreements with our legal team. We have provided Class A+. That's the highest class under ADQ since the mid-'90s. Prior to that, we were providing reclaimed water to the Continental golf course areas from the...directly from the Wildcat plant. And that was probably various classes of water, maybe even before they had classes. But the A+ happened in the mid-'90s, and now that is the standard. We cannot put Class A into our system, that's important. Even though some of the...some of the uses, including at the golf courses, can technically take Class A, we...we...City Council directed staff to make A+ water. And that plus is the reduction of nitrogen in the water to below 10 milligrams per liter. So anyway, Snow Bowl is...I believe snowmaking is an AA+. But there are some BB+ things we could provide water to, including golf courses. And still today, Continental takes water directly from the Wildcat Hill plant, whereas the rest of the system can take water from either the Rio plant or Wildcat plant. If one plant can't make that A+ water, it won't put into the reclaimed system. In terms of reclaimed water trends, reclaimed water that...the uses that I had on the previous slide have been in state code for decades now, and they haven't really changed. The addition of snowmaking is one addition they made to the state code. But other than that, there haven't been any significant changes until today, where ADEQ is allowing advanced water purification. That's taking treated wastewater, purifying it through many different types of treatment processes, so it's purified, and you can put that directly into a drinking water system. That should be permissible in July this year. So that's a major advancement, and a lot of the...several of the Valley cities in Tucson, they're looking at bringing advanced water purification into their drinking water systems. We have looked at, it's also called direct potable reuse. We've looked at that for Flagstaff, and I highlighted three studies here. We've been looking at this through time and how we might bring that into our water portfolio someday, but we haven't made any decisions. And we're really not facing a water crisis where we have to decide tomorrow what...if we want to do advanced water purification. But in these three studies, we looked at other things we can do with reclaimed water. We could put it in Tupper Lake Mary, we can recharge that water to the aquifer and recover it. That is another discussion some other day. But the work group, it was important to them to understand, you know, with the water that remains after we give the water to our contract holders, any water that remains, they wanted to understand, you know, should we be saving money to construct systems like for AWP? Or wanting to understand with rate revenues, what the future trends, how those might influence your decisions on how we price reclaimed water. Reclaimed water policy, touching on this. Reclaimed water rates are unique in that the governing body can set them however you want to. Unlike water and wastewater rates, which must be set on a cost-of-service basis, that's a really important distinction. And...but it makes an arbitrary setting of reclaimed water rates, it can be awkward, and why it has been awkward for maybe some in our community and maybe some of our reclaimed water users. Our existing policy comes from that 2014 document, and I provided the reclaimed water portion of the policy document to you in your packet. The goal in policy is a minimum of full cost recovery, which we have been doing for the past maybe five years, when four funds were created in water services, a water fund, wastewater fund, reclaimed water fund, and a stormwater fund, and all of those stand alone. We're not subsidizing reclaimed water by any other funds. We collect enough revenue to cover our basic cost of service that we've been providing. We're not adding a lot of capital projects. We collect, you know, a million dollars a year or so, and that goes to pay for operation and maintenance in some small capital projects. So we are meeting this goal, I would say, from my perspective. And the second part of this policy, to the extent the City Council determines whether these charges discourage the use of reclaimed water, the charges for reclaimed water shall be adjusted to encourage its use. So in the '90s, when the reclaimed water was...system was set up, we were trying to encourage folks not on reclaimed water to move to this lesser quality water. And we wanted to, you know, encourage its use through a lower price point. This is still the policy. And highlighting that if we had to adjust the charge down, that we were willing to subsidize by water rate customers. Reclaimed water avoids us providing potable water to those customers. So that's why it's commonly attached to water savings and water benefits versus maybe a wastewater benefit. Or a benefit to the environment. So example of existing policy for cost recovery, our revenues are about $800,000 a year, and our expenses plus our capital projects equal our revenue. This policy does not address how rates are set or define a rate structure. The rate structure is the same as the potable rate structure. Looking at the adopted rates for the next five years, I just wanted to provide the example that reclaimed water rate structure does look like potable, we can see that here. But we have...we have the private residential, they're the only tiered customers. We have commercial, manufacturing, institutional, hydrant, sand pipes. We also have an off-peak golf course category. A lot of the golf courses, Pine Canyon and Continental, they have storage lakes, and they can pump from us during the nighttime when our on-demand customers aren't taking water. So that is an advantage to us as operators of the system. The percentage of potable is shown on the right. The reclaimed rates are set at 35% of the potable rate, with the exception of out of...or with a main extension, where the collection is 75% of potable. We have off-peak golf course is set at 87% of potable, and it looks like hydrant meters are set at 50% of potable, so it's not across-the-board 35%. Continental was the first user in Flagstaff in 1966, and they worked hard to get the water from Wildcat Hill at that time. Expanded the system in the 1990s with the addition of the Rio to Flag Water Reclamation Plan. As I stated, the Purple Pipe Network was...it's a large transmission main designed to serve large customers, large volume customers. I've kind of listed the types of customers we have in the lower right. We have about 30 commercial or irrigation-type customers, and I've listed those out. Some...we have some car washes, a lot of irrigation at apartment complexes, Flagstaff Mall. We have eight residential customers, so we did allow those who wanted to join an incentive back then to join. We also had agreements with Lake NAU and I think Pine Canyon, where we provided the funding for them to build...for us to construct the infrastructure to them, and they paid us back. I think that was over like a 10-year type period. And, yeah. Other facts, the only reclaimed water restriction in city code is that no person shall irrigate golf courses with potable water. So we won't give them potable, they take reclaim. They could irrigate their golf course with raw groundwater, however. This chart is showing through time, every year, how much reclaimed water is delivered to customers. Most customers, the high-demand months are in the dry months of the year, where we have a trickle left over. That trickle is dedicated to the Arizona Game and Fish. An agreement, we have the bow-and-arrow agreement, where we'd have to discharge 100 gallons a minute on average over a week at the Rio plant and the Wildcat plant for environmental flows. Other than that, 100% pretty much goes to our customers in the summer, but in the shoulder months, the winter months, we have only a few customers, in the winter, one being Snow Bowl. So the dark bar on top is showing in acre feet how much water is delivered to customers versus discharged to the Rio to Flag. And so, over the course of the year, we have thousands of acre feet of water that we could use for water management, so advanced water purification or recharge and recovery. It flows down in the Rio to Flag, obvious environmental benefit, but that is water that the community can elect to use for water supply. And even though this is 2010 to 2019, it looks the same it has for the last six years. This is showing, over the course of a year, by the month, how much water is attributed to each category. So you'll see in January, almost 100%, if not 100% of what is delivered goes to commercial. And then you'll see the green creeping up in the summer, which our bigger users are the golf courses in the summer. Yes?
Could I ask, in what category is Snow Bowl included?
Councilmember Spence, commercial.
Thank you.
So going back to April 2024 in the City Council meeting, talking about rates, council requested staff work with the Water Commission to provide guidance on whether to deviate from the current policy as a percent of potable. The rates adopted by council were effective September 1st, 2024. And I've already mentioned 8.5% increase each year. A timeline of our conversations. We took this to the Water Commission, and at the time Chairman Kurt Regelman, he said, "Yeah, let's tackle this," and he wanted to form a work group. The Water Commissioners supported him in that, and several Commissioners wanted to take part in that. He drafted the guidance document. That is now included in your council packet as a final document. So he drafted that based on his observations of reclaimed water use in Flagstaff, talking to customers. And then the work group worked through three meetings to kind of dissect the draft that he put together. They asked questions of staff, they had discussions, we provided information. They asked Councilmember, Vice Mayor Sweet for her input, and that brings us to this point in time. I wanted to highlight the guidance document to the best of my ability, representing the work group. I wanted to highlight the components of the guidance document before we ask for your direction. Let's see. The reclaimed water users that participated, including Northern Arizona University, Aspen Valley, Continental Golf Course, our city parks. Of course, they're impacted by reclaimed rates, with a number of parks on reclaimed water, and Snow Bowl participated. They discussed the current pricing policy and alternatives, alternative ways to set pricing. They had an overview from Rick Tatter on fund financing, or finances, I should say, current and future goals of the reclaimed water program, and then challenges for our users and the utility in operations and maintenance of the system. So the recommendation is to implement a cost-based reclaimed water pricing methodology to replace the present percent of potable pricing approach. And why is that? They felt it achieves an equitable recovery of costs by aligning the methodology as a cost of service. It aligns that methodology with the way we collect, way we set rates with water and wastewater cost recovery. So it's just the same across the board. Revisits a rate structure, so that rate structure would change. It would be based on how our reclaimed water users are using water, when they're using water, how much they're using, and the demand on our system, rather than keeping the same rate structure as potable water. The recommendation was not to necessarily revisit the policy now, but at the next rate study, which we do have that check-in opportunity in January next year. And they've identified water conservation initiatives. Water conservation initiatives kind of set the stage for maybe making decisions on the thousands of acre feet that we do have. Today, if we wanted to do advanced water purification, we wouldn't have any water to run through an advanced water purification facility in the summer months. And unless we asked our reclaimed water customers to cut back their use, or if we put some on potable, just so we could keep that AWP plant running, for example. So the committee said, or the work group said, "Why not start looking at some water conservation things now?" A reclaimed water pricing system based on cost of service provides a simple, transparent logic. It provides ongoing funding to sustain reclaimed water operations at a level consistent with the needs and expectations of customers. So we had good conversations about expectations. It provides a method to address past questions concerning reclaimed water pricing fairness. In 2015, you had a full room here when we were talking about reclaimed water rates and perceived fairness. It provides a mechanism to incentivize conservation and demand smoothing. What is demand smoothing? It's the peak times when reclaimed water customers need water. Sometimes we can't deliver that. Our storage systems drop too quickly, and our team has to reach out to certain customers and ask them to come back or curtail their use. So demand smoothing is something we might be able to work with customers on or add infrastructure, additional storage, or something to help with that, equalizing the system. Basically, this cost of service analysis, when we work with the reclaimed water customers, we can identify the capital projects that help achieve those goals. You might remember in October of 2023, a long list of reclaimed water CIP projects. So this is a process to start addressing which ones we do and why. So let's see here. This approach of going to a cost-based pricing will put reclaimed water pricing on the same basis as potable and wastewater pricing. So again, the same methodology would be used. They're not recommending changing the five-year reclaimed water price trajectory agreed during the most recent rate study. Instead, the pricing methodology would be formed by by our next rate study, which we already have planned. Sorry, that seemed a bit repetitive. I may have had an extra slide in there. Key characteristics of the proposed cost-based plan and management approach. City Council, you'll have an opportunity to review the cost allocations. That's the component of reclaim, of, sorry, of wastewater treatment that is included in the pricing of reclaimed water and generating reclaimed water. So you'd have an opportunity to kind of be part of that process of how we allocate those different costs to our customers. It includes our reclaimed customers as partners in determining those capital projects that we do. It may or may not include tiers or seasonal pricing to incentivize conservation, demand smoothing. It does require changing or updating our policies if you elect to change the methodology. And there were some additional key recommendations, expanding the scope of water conservation activities. This was agreed upon by these larger volume users. Maybe we look to the Department of Water Resources and what they have in their active management areas. They have this fifth management plan work group. We can look to what they're implementing for water conservation. Basically, an application of water per acre on a golf course, for example. How do we compare in Flagstaff? We would continue having those kinds of conversations. Also, we're not, there is no enforcement of how reclaimed water users irrigate, when, time of day. Like we have on potable, no watering between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, or 9:00 and 3:00, I can't remember. But no watering during the middle of the day. Should we, should we implement that in, on the reclaimed water side? Or something like it. Again, we would work with our users. If we decide to implement IPRDPR, indirect potable re, or recharge and recovery, we could evaluate the advantages and disadvantages of converting to a value-based reclaimed water pricing system in base of a cost-based system. So that we did provide some documents to you, including within the guidance document, just some other key takeaways from the work group in these categories. They have these guiding principles. I don't want to keep reading a lot of material here. But these are just, if you want to understand how the work group, what their preferred solutions was for using reclaimed water, how we should consider continuing to use reclaimed water. They provided some of their thoughts in the document. Recommended actions during the five-year rate period. Some of these we've already touched on. But let's create a stakeholder group of the reclaimed water users so we can continue to have conversations. Confer with the user group, with this new group, to identify potential conservation activities or development of onsite or system-wide storage facilities to increase the constant availability of reclaimed water. So again, maybe creating some reclaimed water available for advanced water purification. Determine if funding is available to facilitate conservation and increases in storage. Might there be funds through the City General Fund or county, state, or federal loans or grants to help with those programs? Perform the formal cost of service survey to align City Council and the Water Department on which cost components are included in the reclaimed water rates and to ensure all relevant costs are being captured. And keeping in mind expected regulatory requirements. The discharge to the Rio de Flag is subject to our ZPTI's permit, it's called. It's a pollution elimination permit. So requirements on how clean the water has to be, those requirements do change. So we do need to, in the cost of service type study, include those potential costs as well, forecasting those. And also the PFOS that you hear about, that's in potable water or raw drinking water sources. It's also in reclaimed water. So if there are regulations, we need to factor those in. The committee recommended that we define, the work group recommended, we define three levels of service for consideration. So I would say today is our kind of basic service. So are there different levels that we can provide to provide better service to the customers? And the reclaimed water work group did want to see us launch the study no sooner than year three of the current rate cycles, just so we can implement changes before the fifth year of the, or the last year of the rate increases. And I went through that. Again, just some of the water conservation initiatives that we can consider with your guidance. And now we are into the end of the talk and back to the direction in front of you. Do we explore water conservation and reclaimed water demand smoothing actions now? Would you like to direct staff to include a cost-of-service-based analysis in the next rate study? Would you like us to just take no action and address this when it comes up again? Or take a different action? So this is your time for discussion and our time to address any questions.
Thank you, Erin. We have a question from Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm guessing that maybe some people in the work group will speak. Nicole, are you going to speak? So I may have some questions after that. But, and I apologize, I got a little, I got confused. So I just need you to be patient. So if you go back to that slide where you showed the use of water, it was a bar chart?
Yes. By months?
Yeah, maybe that, well, no, there was one, that one.
Okay.
So I'm reading this that the dark one is what we deliver to our reclaimed water customers, and the light blue is what we're discharging into the Rio. So one of my confusions was, you made some comments about maybe running out or having to regulate that a little bit more. Can you just expand on that? And then I'll go to my next question.
Yes. My comment about maybe running out, I'm not sure I remember exactly what I was.
So, okay, so.
Do you remember? Sure, if you know.
Thank you, Council Vice Mayor and Mayor. So I think Erin's comment about running out is a seasonal consideration. So in May and June, the amount of water that we can produce through our plants is essentially committed to the customers and what we have to discharge into those riparian areas. What you're seeing in the light blue graph is during the winter, when there is not much demand for the water. So the demand smooth, this kind of plays into the demand smoothing comment also, is that with potable water, drinking water, it's a totally different subject. We have the ability to produce essentially twice as much water per day as people are going to use in the potable system. In the reclaim system, we have two wastewater plants that are treating reclaimed water, and they can put out essentially 6 million gallons per day. And that's their capacity. So potable water, we only need storage for 24 to 48 hours because there's these fast cycles of people wake up, they take a shower, and then they go to work. With the reclaim system, it's a seasonal cycle. So the amount of storage that you would need to go from the winter to the summer would essentially be like a lake-sized reservoir as opposed to like a drinking water, one or two million gallon-sized tank. Does that help answer the question?
Exactly. And so then clarify, you talked about the five-year rate increase. That's already for reclaimed. It was in our overall water rate increase. But this, you're talking about maybe reviewing if we need to do more than that?
The review would be, right now you're collecting dollars from the customer classes based on how they're, based on the classes on potable. So there hasn't been an evaluation adopted by council that looks at reclaimed water independent of potable, if that makes sense? So each customer class, there might not be a proportional collection of funds from the customers and the customer classes because it wasn't, the dollars wasn't set on how those people are using water, the time of day, the demand on our system, the demand on our staffing. And we went through that whole rate process on potable and wastewater, a cost of service analysis, but not reclaim.
And then one last comment, and then I'll, I may have some other questions after the public comment. But what I'm understanding is, if we were to consider reclaim water to bring it up to a grade, to make it drinking water, we would need more funds?
Yes, 100, 200 million dollars.
Not in fact, a fan of that. I'm going to tell you right now, after thought of that, I'm not there yet. I may, take me 20 years. And I don't see the necessity of it either. So I just wanted to make that comment. We don't need to go there drinking sewer water yet. So that's all I have for right now.
Purified water. I just wanted to point out, Mayor and Councilmember Matthews, this graph is, the intent was to show the delta in the winter months. The purple line is how much we produce. And then the top of the bar is what we deliver into the system. So the difference in acre feet per month is what goes into the, into the Rio de Flag.
And is there any minimum that we have to release into the Rio?
It's that 100 gallons a minute weekly average, and I think that's 60 acre feet a month, if I remember correctly.
We're still way above that.
Yeah, yeah, way above that.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Erin. Paint a picture for me where we're at with Sinclair Wash Riparian Corridor vision and how this plays into that. And then my second question for you, I do have some commentary, but I'm eager to hear from public comment first. The recommendation for the timing on this is fairly specific, 2026. Can you walk me through that a little bit more, what the reasoning for that was by the commission? It wasn't sooner, it's not later. Just help me understand why that recommendation is specifically where it is.
Absolutely. So your first question, Sinclair Wash. There is a delta of reclaimed water available. It looks like there's some in the summer, but there's very little, actually. But in all the other months, if someone wanted to buy water, let's say, and release it somewhere, we could do that. There's an infrastructure cost, so how close is it to the existing Purple Pipe? Releasing it at Sinclair Wash at Lone Tree. We were working on a pilot project, or we did actually complete a pilot project. We released water from a valve. We put in place there to look at the seepage rates into the aquifer for a true recharge and recovery program. If you're talking Sinclair Wash higher than that, closer to City Hall, we haven't explored that too much. But if you're talking about the Lone Tree project, that's it. There's been a lot of, there was a lot of support for that, but there's also some opposition because reclaimed water. because reclaimed water isn't pure water. And it does, even though it's very clean, in fact, our drinking, our reclaimed water meets Safe Drinking Water Act quality when we've had it tested. It's the compounds of emerging concern what's unregulated, even on the potable water side, that has some in the community concerned, and they've expressed that to council with that project. We're already discharging a mile below this location at the Rio de flag site. We're already discharging there. We have been since the 90s. So moving it a mile up is just an opinion. Is it really, you know, are we, it's not like we're impacting, you know, a pristine area a mile up at Lone Tree. We were going to apply for a grant. We did not make the deadline to apply for the grant. But frankly, I don't know that our staffing is ready to run a project like that. Our staffing is so dedicated to providing the wastewater services we do today that with our, when Director Jones came, he said, "Let's pump the brakes here." Another component of releasing water at Lone Tree was, "Well, let's do a little advanced treatment pilot project there, and people can come visit and advance treatment process." We talked about doing granular activated carbon. But again, it was, "Let's pump the brakes and focus on getting our current wastewater systems up to speed." So that's kind of the status of that.
So I would just like to say out loud now that I encourage pursuing that vision further. And especially newer members of council might not totally understand what the conversation is right now. I encourage you to meet with Paul Byer and the Friends of the Rio de Flag to learn more about the vision of a riparian corridor on that part of Sinclair Wash between Lone Tree and I-40, I guess it would be, and the wetlands that they have there. I think it's a neat vision. I'm not as concerned about the concerns that others have brought forward in the past. And I think that conversation may be in a different place at this point, anyway. So be thinking about maybe taking a second look at that as, as water services, and we'll see where, we'll see where that goes once other council members have some of those conversations, I guess. And then the other question about timing.
Yeah, so our previous director, Shannon Jones, had his, his vision for doing rate studies is to do one fund at a time and do one fund each year, not four funds at one time like we did in 2015. This time, we pulled out storm water and did that separate, and we did three funds at once. So his schedule was, "Let's look at water in '26, wastewater in '27, should be doing storm water soon," I understand. And then storm water again in '28. And he said we'd attach reclaimed water to water, since it saves us that potable water that we'd have to be providing to customers. So anyway, that was his schedule, I would say.
It sounds logical, like splitting up the Winter and Summer Olympics.
City Manager.
Thank you. I'd like to, I guess, offer a couple of comments back to the Sinclair Wash idea. Having met with the Friends of the Rio and having, like many of us, visited that site, I do also agree with Councilmember Aslan that we should consider that the infrastructure is close, that's been ascertained. And respectful of the comments that have been raised about not doing it, I just want to add to the discussion. Compounds of emerging concern are going to be a concern anywhere within the Drainage Basin because eventually water is released into the ground somewhere. It's, to my knowledge, not exported out of the Drainage Basin. If so, not, not in any great abundance. So if we look at it from that standpoint, in the basin, CEC is compounds of emerging concern to the extent they exist, that issue does not go away, dependent upon location. The other thing is, I, and I don't have data to back this, but, so it's a bit anecdotal, but I do understand, and I think it is visible in visiting the site, the riparian habitat is in a state of decline there. We're losing the riparian habitat, as we are in many tributaries in the community. That could be from a number of concerns or reasons, not the least of which is drought and climate change. But also what may factor into that is less release of water than has historically been the case. I don't know. But I think there is, there should be careful consideration about the value of maintaining our riparian habitat, and with that, the wildlife habitat, pardon me, the wildlife that uses that habitat, as long, as well as the other considerations that are on the table. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Erin, for the presentation. And this question may be a little off topic, so please feel free to say if it's completely outside of the scope of this. But just as we're looking at the, the guiding principles for the use of reclaimed water, and I'm thinking of prior conversations we've had in, in the past with tribal partners on the use of reclaimed water, I believe, for snowmaking on the mountain and just some of the challenges that that presents. Is this conversation something that would sort of propel that conversation as well? Or would they happen at the same time, or one before the other, in your estimation?
In my estimation, they would not happen at the same time. And this is me speaking on, off the top of my head, just, the reclaimed agreement with Snowball isn't up until 2032, I believe.
2034.
2034, 2034. So this rates conversation is much earlier than that. And that's really the only comment for me that comes to mind. I might look down the panel here.
My, my only addition to that is, like she said, it would definitely be before there's a discussion again about the reclaimed water being sold to Snowball.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And great presentation, Erin, to you and your team. I know it takes all of you to get these things done, and you did a good job on presenting it. My quick question is just, you mentioned a long list of CIP projects with the, with the new water rate study funding. My question is, do you want, are, is there plans to increase the Purple Piping around? Or are we kind of where it's at with that?
We are, it's pretty much where it's at. We did explore, and we do have a reclaimed water master plan. We did explore expanding Purple Pipe. But it became very clear that we would have to improve the level of service a lot in order to provide the same expectation as we do on potable. So we would have to expand storage systems to deliver more, have more water available in the summer, and then provide that continuous service to outlying areas. It's also very expensive to put more pipe in the ground. And there weren't, I don't know that we really identified any large users where there was a, the, the cost made sense to invest in offsetting any potable. What we're wanting to encourage more and more is, "Let's just be efficient with any water we're using, potable or not." And then there's this pressure, kind of, to be, you know, recharge and recovery as a water management of that additional water versus giving it to more outdoor water users. So that's kind of what we looked at more on a qualitative scale. We really didn't put true numbers to additional Purple Pipe versus the offset through recharge and recovery in keeping our aquifer levels higher, for example. So we did more of a qualitative analysis that brought us to that conclusion during the reclaimed water master plan work.
That was an excellent question, or answer, because it answered all of the subquestions that I had within it. Perfect. Now, this is just for my own knowledge. You talked about the Rio discharge. Now, is that simply to, well, for many reasons, I'm sure, but does it have a, a component toward serving communities downstream, or is it mainly recharge and riparian type things?
So from the Rio de flag near, you know, on Babbitt Drive, the discharge to the Rio travels about a mile overland before it really starts to infiltrate. That's why that's not a good site for ADWR, Department of Water Resources, and a recharge project, because they want recharge to occur within a much narrower area, and that's why we went up to Lone Tree, to see if that fracture faulted system there, if the water went down much faster. So there are some beneficiaries, maybe, to the water flowing overland into the county island. And then there are some, actually, one of the residential customers is along that, in that area, but they're tied to the reclaimed Purple Pipe. And then from the Wildcat Plant, the water that discharges there does infiltrate to the aquifer, the same sea aquifer, at some point along that system. There's a lot of overland flow, a lot of diversions of flow. I don't know, legal or illegal, I have really no idea. But that water benefits the Doni Park wells, if it makes it to the sea aquifer there. It doesn't benefit our groundwater wells that are all up gradient of that recharge, if that makes sense. So we've wanted to bring that water that leaves the Wildcat Hill plant, we've wanted to bring that to the Lone Tree location and discharge it there, where it's up gradient of our groundwater city wells.
Thank you so much. I'm also interested in hearing the public comment.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and take public comment. Nicole Elman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. There are some very familiar and friendly faces, which makes it a little easier. My name is Nicole Elman, and I am representing Aspen Valley Golf Course. A quick funny, Erin mentioned restricting daytime use, and I think that's a wonderful idea on the golf course. You don't want to water when people are golfing. Just a moment of levity. Thank you. I would first like to recognize Erin Young, as you see that she's done a bunch of work on this, former Director Jones, current Acting Director Williams, thank you, Water Services staff, and the Water Commission for their work in facilitating the working groups, and for inviting the feedback and participation of reclaimed water users related to this important discussion. Some key concepts and points I would like to highlight are the fact that Aspen Valley and Continental are equal partners in the maintenance company, which holds the City of Flagstaff's affluent water contract, and manages that water distribution to both of the courses. As a private club, Aspen Valley has a fiduciary responsibility to manage our members' fees in the most efficient and transparent manner possible, which is another reason we support the rate study. As a member of the working group, Aspen Valley fully supports the Flagstaff Water Department engaging in a cost of service study for reclaimed water. We also agree that the natural next step is the rate, is a rate study that will develop a specific rate structure for the cost of delivering reclaimed water and treating above the required level to the current A-plus level, which we are all accustomed to. The current methodology of reclaimed water, as Erin had mentioned, is arbitrary with no logical linkage to cost. This doesn't lend itself to best addressing the future needs of the clients or the City of Flagstaff. The team at Aspen Valley appreciates and agrees with the focus on redefining the reclaimed water rate structure in this current rate term, which would be the '26 date, with consideration for implementation post-2029, which would allow that five-year increase of water to be absorbed and realized. As council knows, but perhaps the community doesn't, reclaimed water rates as tied to potable are set to go up by 45% at the end of this rate study, which is a significant increase. We look forward to future collaboration with the Water Department on potential conservation, storage, and/or water quality improvement. We recognize the city's obligation to treat wastewater, which is how reclaimed water is produced, and appreciate the extra steps taken to supply that water to the end users. Aspen Valley remains committed to exploring conservation activities, which include the Arizona Department of Water Resources Fifth Management Plan Work Group, turf reduction, and irrigation system efficiencies, as well as onsite storage. We are also excited to continue to explore mutually beneficial improvements to the overall system and water quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question? Councilmember House.
Thank you, Nicole, for your comments there. I noted that you spoke a bit on what your agency is, is already doing to make adjustments for the use of reclaimed water and mitigating those costs. Can you speak more to what you all have done in that regard?
Thank you, Councilmember House. We are currently engaged in evaluating and replacing some pumps onsite, our primary pump, that provides some updated technology that would create some efficiencies with irrigation. Additionally, we are exploring a full front nine replacement, irrigation replacement, which includes a 30 to 40% turf reduction, irrigated turf reduction, which would subsequently reduce our, the burden of use of that reclaimed water in the high irrigated months. And in the next few years, we will be exploring a back nine irrigation replacement, which will also explore turf reduction. In addition to the irrigation replacement, it will also create some efficiencies, 180-degree sprinkler heads, so we're not watering the cart path, because nothing grows on the cart path. And that'll, that'll lend more to that water conservation effort. There's not a quantitative number I can place on that right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Nicole? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Council, do you have questions or comments, or is someone ready to make a recommendation for direction? Councilmember House?
Just the additional comment that I, I'm suspecting that we may be leaning in the same direction as a council before, and I'll look forward to the motion when it's made. I am supportive of the first option that was presented, and I just want to add that although I, I recognize and thank Erin for clarifying, and staff for clarifying that the contract on Snowball is, is not coming forward again until 2034, I do recommend that we consider the, particularly the guiding principles that are in place on the preference for reclaimed water for snowmaking and things like that. Just to continuously be considering that as we're moving forward and leading up to that plan for the ongoing conversations that we're also having with our tribal communities when it comes to that. I know that's just a major point with our, our tribal neighbors and partners, and so just want that to be part of the ongoing conversation as we're considering this. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you very much. Great discussion. Thank you, all the water commissioners for being here who are with us, listening in. So this topic first came up for me in 2018. I, I believe one of my very first fairs involved questions around this. There is a proposed development that wanted to put in a small lake or a large pond, and I remember scratching my head and wondering, not, you know, I, I had questions about that. I didn't have answers or solutions, just questions, and I wanted the conversation to, to come up. So, you know, in, in terms of water conservation and our ethic here in Flagstaff, which is well-known and celebrated, I, I think my sensibilities around this generally align with the guiding document. And just in, in general, Erin, I give a lot of weight to the opinions of the Water Commission members and the Flagstaff Water Group, which has several members on the commission. You know that. So my, my, my direction as we proceed with, we proceed with water conservation at top of mind, always, now and down the road in the future. Cost recovery is definitely important, but it's secondary to using a rate to encourage better practices. As with our other water rate structures, I would like to incentivize conservation and discourage copious overuse or mismanagement of that water resource. With respect to a question that Councilmember House raised, and she just alluded to it a second ago, too, I was thinking along these lines as well. I don't want Snowball and golf courses behind the wheel of this conversation. In the car, absolutely. I don't misunderstand my awareness of the variety of different stakeholders that are involved in this conversation. But I do want to be direct. I do want to be direct. 2034 is not as far away as it might seem. It's pretty close around the corner. There's no reason for us to be caught flat-footed in 2033 when people start to say, well, this conversation is too important for us to rush it. Let's maintain the status quo for now. We can all see that coming. So let's get ahead of it and make sure this conversation is finished well before then. And that means bringing a variety of stakeholders to a table and sitting with the tension that's there. That's a process that needs time. It shouldn't be rushed. So let's start now. With this rate structure, as well as with others, I'm sure, I do want to be, I want to remain nimble enough to pivot smoothly into taking advantage of emerging technologies, and that includes potable reuse. I know Councilmember Matthews, it's a bridge too far for her. I always picture Kevin Costner standing on the, you know, a skiff or a clipper. I'm not going to finish that image. But you guys know what I mean. It's very aspirational, but it's also, it's not George Jetson stuff, you know? These are things that we can do with our city managers confused. Look up the movie Waterworld. Okay. So, and really what this comes down to is the conversation about what's coming next ultimately for me involves an acknowledgement that water is water, and we need to be treating it as a precious resource, no matter what condition it's coming to us in. And then finally, this is for later, I have a question. Neil, Paul, folks in the back, later in your present, your next presentation about total water service pumping capacity, specifically in terms of fire hydrant capacity during catastrophic wildfires, and I'm just curious how this conversation plays into that. If you're able to, please have that in the queue, ready to go, as some of the out loud thinking we do together in the next conversation. Thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you. I'm taking over for a brief moment here. I am next in line for a comment, and I just wanted to thank Erin and her team, the Reclaimed Water Working Group, and the Water Commission. This has been a few months of us having this discussion, and I thank them for bringing this to the forefront. I think now is the time that we start having this out in the community. And it has been a lot of great input, and for me, I see that option one is the way to go. You know, there's no harm in exploring the future. It's coming at us one way or another, and I want to keep our options open. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you. And it looks like Councilmember Garcia, you're next.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll be brief. I lean towards option one for sure. I don't see, as long as it's not going to impede on staff's time or the ability to care out of other water services, I think this would be a nice extra program, so that way we could wrap our heads around this appropriately. Also, I'm always in favor of advanced potable reuse and the technology that's happening with it. Keeping that in the conversation over time, I think, will lessen the price somehow, just because more people are going to start going to that. And it'll, it should be able to make it more affordable for us in the next 10 or 20 years, or whenever we need it, or maybe 100 years. And I also wanted to thank the community partners that showed up tonight for public comment. It's good to see such an active and, active community partnership that cares about not just their services that they could provide, but also how they could help out our water services, and they've been such a good partner for so long. Thank you, Cara, or, sorry, Councilmember House, and Councilmember Aslan for your bringing up the Snow Bowl. I don't have to bring it up now. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. And I see that Sterling has something in the comment.
Yeah, just a reminder for Council, this is a discussion item only tonight. There won't be a motion. In fact, I think we're hearing the direction as you each comment, but there's no need for a motion tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for clarifying. And Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My first question's for Austin. What was it, what kind of water did you drink when we did that tour out in the Water Services?
It was potable water.
He took a scoop and he drank it from, I don't know, outside in the treatment plant.
No, I didn't.
He did. Anyway, I just wanted to thank Erin. Great information, great presentation. I know it, you know, it takes a lot of people to put that together, and just working with our community and the water groups and stuff, I really appreciate you getting them involved and really having a great, robust conversation. I appreciate that, especially to the people that are most greatly impacted. I've heard from Pine Canyon and now from Aspen Valley, all of their aspirations, what they've done and what they're going to do to reduce water and conservation, and that's really great to see that they're being very active and proactive in reducing their water usage, and that's really great to hear. So I, to support option one, moving forward whenever you bring that back to us.
Thank you. And Councilmember Spence.
I was waiting for a vote to express my opinion, but if, since we're not going to vote, I too favor option one.
Great. I think we have heard from all of Council. Staff, do you need anything else from us?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Give me one second. Okay, we are down to the overview of the Community Fire Preparedness Efforts. Come on down.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I've got a, quite a team of folks helping me tonight. We're going to give you some broad overview information, and I'm going to, I'm going to bring in the subject matter experts, and they'll take a bit of a deep dive on a topical area, including Councilmember Aslan, you mentioned, top of mind for a lot of people is the failure of the water system in Southern California. And we have prepared, our water, Interwater Director is prepared to discuss that. And we'll talk to you about what the expectations of that water system are. And so we'll do that today. Just want to really kind of talk about the Fire Department. There's going to be some, I'll say, broad-based information that we'll provide. And then really, I think we want to get into the partners. We want to roll out a concept that some of you have seen already. It's the five Es of community risk reduction. We think, we think that is how we help Flagstaff avoid some of the tragedy we've seen in the Southern California fires. And we think it's an important concept to kind of introduce to policymakers such as yourself and to the community at every opportunity. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight at the end, and you've been working hard. So we'll try to be as succinct as possible, but we have a lot of ground cover. And so, always, we like to start with mission. And I always talk about the mission because for us, mission is paramount. You know, I've been working for a long time in this service that we do, and this municipal effort that we have. And one of the best things about the work that I get to do is I've worked through recessions, I've worked through pandemics, and so have you. And we never lose clarity of what we're here to do. And for us, that exceptional customer service to the community visitors in the surrounding region resonates with us, and particularly the folks that are going to be stepping up and speaking in various different capacities in the next few minutes. But we start with mission. The next thing, just associated with your Fire Department that we wanted to just touch on, we have two administrative staff. We have wildland, excuse me, two fire prevention staff. We have nine wildland staff, six command staff, and 90 firefighters. When you think about 90 firefighters, we have fire captains who are frontline supervisors, and then we have specialists that operate our complex apparatus called engineers, and then we have firefighters. And so 90 firefighters on the line. One of the things I wanted to cover initially, I want to say thank you to Brandy Suda, our Finance Director, for helping us improve the display of financial information about your Fire Department. I will tell you, no matter how you slice it, there's always one financial view that kind of displays the data in one light and another that puts it in a different light. We wanted to highlight some of the important things. And one of the things that's, we really want to highlight is the fact that when I first came to this community almost 12 years ago, the difficulty in trying to hire firefighters, new positions, was the employee-related expenses matched wages because of our just incredible, the incredible weight of pension for a number of reasons, and we were not alone, but we certainly were burdened by that pension, that unfunded pension relief. As a point of pride, the City of Flagstaff actually pioneered the Certificates of Participation. We did that under the leadership of Rick Tatter, and a number of communities and fire districts in Arizona have followed suit to try to get out from underneath that burden and save their taxpayers money, which certainly that helped happen for us, reducing that cost. The cost and expense of that debt service on the Certificates of Participation live in the budget. They do not live in the Fire Department budget. They live in the General Fund. But for us, that was a big deal that really took a lot of pressure and burden off of the system. The other thing that's really important that the Council did, that I thought was super important, was the creation of the Water Resource Protection, the fee that funds RWFM, Water Resource Infrastructure Fund, or Protection Fund, is a new revenue source that allowed us to staff up the Fire Department Wildfire Management Division. Prior to that fund, we lived in the fund with the Fire Department and competed for resources within the Fire Department, within the General Fund. And our cycle looked like this. Right about this time of every year, we'd be trying to hire temporary seasonal employees, and we're competing with everybody else that's hiring wildfires, wildfire firefighters in the region. And that, that competition was fierce, and it was, it was difficult for us because we would then onboard the firefighters that we selected. We'd bring them onboard, we'd train them, we'd put them to work until their season ended, and they'd be laid off, and we'd start the cycle all over again, every year. And so what this has allowed us to do is hire really seasoned, experienced wildfire management professionals and bring them into the team. And the, the impact of that on our effectiveness in the community and community preparedness, it's difficult to overstate that. So I just wanted to mention that this right here, this other view, this worldview here, the personnel services, contractual commodities, like many fire departments, our number one resource and our most costly resource is people. And so this is illustrative of that. And then you see kind of the relationship contractual going up and down commodities. There was some previous views we had that had capital improvement in them as well. And the capital improvement, the dilemma with that is really hampered by a new phenomenon. One of those phenomena is, is we will ask City Council to purchase a new fire truck. We'll go through a procurement, and we'll encumber the funds. Three to four years later, those funds are being carried forward every year because production time on some of the equipment we're purchasing is three to four years now. So it makes, when you actually take a look at those funds carrying forward, it makes it difficult. So we've taken that view out so you can kind of just see it in this line. So again, thanks very much to the Finance Director for helping us with this view. Just on a daily basis, want to talk a little bit about, you have six fire stations in our system here, Flagstaff Fire Stations. You have one wildland station that's at the airport in a historic building on the ramp. It's, it's literally on the ramp of the Fire Department. We have a training facility that's out by Wildcat. We have six frontline engines. Fire engines are our frontline, the bread and butter service for the fire services. We put paramedic firefighters in response to fires, wildland fires, structured fires, chest pain, medical calls. That all-risk response goes to every type of incident. We have two frontline rescues. Those are smaller. If you think of, if you see a red ambulance going down the road, that's one of your rescues. And that's typically an advanced life support, paramedic-level unit, and they also are, they're also dispatched to fires, but that unit that they respond in is predominantly medically focused. We have two co-staff ladder trucks. They're sitting in firehouses next to engine companies, and that engine company, depending on the type of call, has to select which apparatus they're going to take. We have a wildland fire module, which is, again, part of the decision to fund the wildfire management with the fees, allowed us to put together a very capable module of wildland firefighters that go out and just join the complement of firefighters on duty every day in wildland fire response. One of the things we like to make sure the community understands is regardless of whether it's a wildland firefighter or a structural firefighter assigned to engine two, they're all wildland firefighters. So that 90 we talked about, plus the wildfire management piece, all trained wildland firefighters. We'll talk to you a little bit more about that. And then the other thing we just also have to mention is the Council invested in care. And the care program has removed over 1,000 calls. We just saw a meeting today. We're going to be updating some of these figures. But what we've done is we've taken over 1,000 calls that are not emergencies. They represent true needs in the community, but sending a red fire truck is probably not the right tool. And so the care unit has been wildly successful in keeping those units available for emergencies and, and also sending a better and more correct tool for the types of calls that we're seeing in the community. So one of the things that really want to stress, and this team behind us, they all are a big part of it, but this taking care and protecting the community is clearly a team sport. There is no way that it can be done in a fashion, in a vacuum, without partners within the city and external to the city. And so we want to just make sure that we reemphasize that. Some of those partners have joined us here today. I want to point out that we have an absence of folks that are clearly partners. We're clearly, we are clearly in discussion with them on a daily basis about their part in protecting the community, and that's our federal partners. I will tell you that you will not see federal partners here today. There are a lot of things going on in the federal government that, that are uncertain at the moment, but I will tell you that our local partners that are members of that federal team, they're absolutely engaged with us in communications, and we're working together collaboratively with them. It's a difficult time right now, and we're just kind of working with them through that.
Excuse me, Chief. The city manager has a clarifying comment.
Yeah, thanks. And thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thanks, and thank you, chief. And I'm wondering if you can back up to that slide showing the expenditures right there. Thanks. And thank you for walking us through that. I just want to clarify, I think that the chief made reference to it, but I'm perhaps going to amplify that a bit. In 2020, we, we funded the unfunded pension liability to the tune of a hundred and thirty million dollars, and it was significant, as the chief mentioned, with Certificates of Participation. So we, we did that to, to accomplish a few very important things. One is to demonstrate to all of our public safety personnel our support for them by putting, taking away any risk associated with the public pension liability. It's paid in full. From a budgetary standpoint, what that did for us was enabled us to greatly unencumber our general fund, as the chief made reference to. You're seeing that in the numbers here, as you, you see from 2020 to 2021, you know, a difference of almost negative seventeen percent. At that point, you know, we're no longer paying into that pension as we had been. So that is the primary reason you're seeing a decline there. If you were to extract from these numbers our investment in fire personnel, you'd see a positive fourteen percent number for that same timeframe, and it has remained positive since then, as the numbers depict. I mention that because there has been some, some, a little bit of public discussion of late about our investment in our fire personnel. I just want to put it out there on the record that we have invested significantly in our fire personnel, and, and the numbers have been positive over the past four or five years to reflect that, even though it's not entirely evident in, in this graph. I'm sharing with you, it was a positive fourteen percent increase that year, and then the other numbers that you see are applicable. It's not to suggest that we're where we need to be from a staffing standpoint, although our investment in our personnel has had, had consequence. We currently have a zero vacancy rate in our fire department, which is great. It's the gold standard. That's what we'd like to see elsewhere. But it is, again, it's not the same as saying we are fully staffed and, and equipped with infrastructure and fire stations to bring, as, as, as the future will demand upon us. We are not currently meeting those future demands. I'm sure there'll be discussion of that to, to come. It's a discussion we're having internally right now. But it is to suggest that we've been investing quite heavily in, in our public safety personnel, both fire and police, and the numbers bear that out. Thank you.
Will we be adding a line item to this that indicates that?
Indicates investment in personnel?
The PS PRS that we paid off the liability.
I think, well, you know, in previous budget statements, we really highlighted that. Now it's been a few years, and it's no longer the same current topic that it was back when we did that, but I, I, I think it needs to always be reflected in our budget because the numbers are greatly skewed when that pension was paid down.
Yeah, I mean, anyone looking at this, seeing a negative seventeen percent would have pause, so I think it's important for us to have the, the budget numbers tell that story.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And, and just to, as your fire chief, let me just say that the notion that our city council now seated and previous have not invested in the fire department is complete fiction. What, what I would like to say is my gratitude is, is to the council for trying to take care of wages and compensation for our firefighters to allow us to hang on to them and try to keep them in this community. We're not always successful, but certainly, certainly what we've seen is commitment, and we've seen it from the city manager, and we've seen it from the city council in trying to help us address that and keep our staff. So I'm grateful for that. So just a real quick, the five Es, and what we would, what we would suggest to anyone is that the five Es of community risk reduction, these Es are mitigations. And so we have an opportunity, and we think how you protect the community is that you put investment and you put resources and effort into the five Es. And we just kind of, we'll, we'll kind of have an opportunity to talk about it a, a little bit later, but if you think about where you've seen catastrophic losses such as this, we then begin to look at, well, was there an opportunity prior to the fire to, to prevent that tragedy from occurring through the exploration of, and the investment of, and the advancement of mitigations in any of the five Es? And so we'll, we'll try to show you how that looks when you look at programming citywide, some within the fire department, some collaborative with other entities, and some that are the responsibility of, of other entities that we support. So really, we'd like to kind of get that effort and that recognition of these mitigations in, in your thoughts about how we should protect the community. And so education is that first piece. We've got some examples that are coming in, but the educational piece for us is raising awareness, providing knowledge to community members about risk and safety measures, making our citizens, our, our folks that we protect and serve, make them more resilient and resistant to this type of catastrophic occurrence. And so education allows us to do that. There's a lot of ways to go about doing it, and we certainly have a number of initiatives that we are working on. So our first, and I'll let our speakers all introduce themselves as you come up to the microphone, but we'll let our first speaker come up and talk to you about one of the educational efforts, and you heard a little bit about it a little earlier, just moments ago.
Good evening, VIP Mayor, Vice Mayor Council. It's, it's so nice to be in front of you tonight. Paul Trogi, Wildland Fire Battalion Chief. And first, I want to thank those of you that accepted our invitation to get out in the community over the next couple of months. I know Tiffany, the executive assistant, is working hard to get those times scheduled for us, so I really appreciate that. Looking forward to, to getting to spend some time with you guys. Whenever we're talking about education, we want to make sure that any education effort we're making has an end product, and one of those end products is ready, set, go. And really, this is, this is a piece of education, but it's also a piece of strategic planning. And so when we're talking about ready, set, go, ready is, is that state that we're always going to be in. So that's, you've got your personal property ready, pine needles are raked, medications are accounted for, those types of things. When we start getting into set, and Neil's going to talk a little bit about this with the next slide, but we've got a, a new product out called our Wildland Fire Action Plan, and ready, set, go is detailed in here pretty specifically. But set is kind of that next step. So if that's for us, what that means here in Flagstaff and for the purposes of, of this presentation, is there's an event. There's a disaster situation. A lot of times for us, that's a wildfire. So we're paying attention to social media. We're watching those different outlets are going to tell us to evacuate. And then go is just that. So when, when we go, we want to, we want to go early, and we want to know where we're going, and we want those people that we're going to to know that we're coming. So just some things to be thinking about, lay the groundwork a little bit of some of the community, community-level stuff that we'll be talking about, and then I'll turn it over to Neil.
Hello, everyone. Neil Chapman, Wildland Fire Captain. Wildland Fire Action Guide. Who's had Mark Adams in your driveway? Just one of you so far? We're working on the rest of you Thursday. Okay. So this is, this is a foundational document for us. We have a couple thousand of these that, that we've been handing out, and it really covers three main topics: defensible space, hardening your home, and being prepared for evacuating. And, and the science around this document is, is pretty well-established. A few weeks ago, after the, the LA fires, I got up and kind of mentioned things we know that haven't changed. The science of this document hasn't changed. We'll probably get some important lessons learned out of the experiences in Los Angeles, but knowing about defensible space, home hardening, and, and what we need to do when evacuations come is, is not changing. So this document, you can get it off the QR code. It's on our Flagstaff Fire Department website as well. And, and really, those, those important messages of how the defensible space, how the home hardening strategies come together to protect you and your home is, is just the foundational concept of our outreach efforts right now. And when, when Mark was at your house, you probably got a, a report from him. So we're now testing a software package. We're using a new template on how we do the inspection of certain things on the property. And, and now that we've invested in that software, you get a report after that assessment, and we're going to come back and check on you. So there's going to be a reminder on that account now that says, did you move the firewood like we asked you to move the firewood? And, and so really maintaining that engagement with the homeowner, you know, this, you saw the five Es. It's a circle. This doesn't, this doesn't end. So we really want to make sure we're plugging in with folks and staying on top of them. And, and so if you have any questions about these home assessments, please let us know. It's an incredible tool for, for helping people in our community.
I'd like the record to reflect that my neighbor got dinged more than I did, and she doesn't watch council meetings, so safe.
Thank you for that. The next E is the enforcement piece. And top of mind right now, and you're, you're hearing discussions about the restrictions process on the forest and on state lands and within the city. And that is one of our best examples of enforcement being part of how we protect the community. Within that, we also have a Wildland Urban Interface Code. We're going to be bringing you a revised, new edition of that code when we participate with the building official and bringing all the model codes forward. We hope to present to you a revised, improved Wildland Urban Interface Code. We've had some conversations with county government. We think there's space for an unincorporated Coconino County to perhaps, at least for new development, put these types of Wildland Urban Interface Code provisions in place. Those, those conversations are underway. Special events in our community is an example of how we regulate and, and protect the community. It's not wildland fire-related. It can be if that special event involves pyrotechnics in our community. But bringing in large populations, the special event, Flagstaff's a fantastic place. And so we are, we draw in special events, and our responsibility is to protect those visitors and our local residents at those facilities as well. And so there's a number of examples of enforcement that we want to, we want to drill down on a couple. So we'll, we'll start with the fire restrictions piece.
And city clerk, I have one go back. Can I go back to slide number ten?
Hit your left arrow.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
That one?
No.
Show me where the list is.
I'll drive. I'll drive. So, so on my first slide that I got up, of course, the, the most important piece, when I built this slide, I put it in the smallest font, like I always do, and that's the evacuation map, and that's highlighted on the slide, upper left-hand corner. And the reason that that is important is that's a map that we actually originally built out of the Wildland Fire Program housed within the fire department. We came and we actually spoke to you, to the council seated at the time, I think in 2022, when we first rolled that map out. And that drills down to the parcel level. So the individual homeowner can get on that link, put it in the individual address, hit enter, it will drill down to the parcel level, and a PDF will populate that can get printed off, and it'll talk about what needs to occur within that evacuation zone within the city of Flagstaff if we were to experience a wildland fire. So, sorry, one very important piece that I left out of that. As we're coming into enforcements, we had our first fire restrictions phone call today. Any guesses as to why that's, that's a little odd to be having one of those in February? So typically, those kick off maybe in May, usually in June, as we're coming into kind of the drier parts of the season. Sometimes, depending on snowpack and monsonal flow, we might not even have restrictions phone calls at all. What a, what a restrictions call is, is it's an opportunity for all fire agencies in Northern Arizona. We get together every Monday at one o'clock, and we talk about the different stages of fire restrictions. And as we all know, for the city of Flagstaff, we have our own stages. And that's listed in that right-hand column. There is, there's a hyperlink to the city of Flagstaff stages, but also in that QR code, Sarah Langley, her staff, and the good people at, or Heidi Hansen's folks have developed some really good products in there, a really easy checklist to go to for fire restrictions and some of those types of things. So just some stuff to be thinking about as we start to move into that time of the season.
Paul, you, further in this presentation, you have a discussion of how those call, how the determinations are made, don't you?
Which determinations? Just?
Like how the Forest Service, how each entity decides when to go to what?
No.
Didn't I see it somewhere?
You know, it might be in there, but I'll, I'll touch on it real quick. Yeah, we do talk about the National Fire Danger Rating System a little bit, and that kind of moves us in and out of those restrictions here locally. And, and all that is, is when you're driving around town, and you're seeing signs outside of Forest Service offices that say low, moderate, high, very high, those types of things, that's one determining factor for how we determine fire restrictions, but it's multifaceted. It's fuel, moistures, it's topography, it's many of those things. We'll talk a little bit about those as we, as we continue through the presentation. And I think Chief C is up next.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm calling to you at the Flagstaff Police Department. I want to give you a little bit of the history of the Woods Watch program at the police department. It predates my employment. I started in 2006, and we proactively go into the wooded area during the dry seasons. Typically, we start in May or June. This year, we're starting in February due to it being so dry and the lack of snowpack that the fire department talked about. So I would say back in 2006, it was a pretty primitive way of patrolling the wooded area. We'd go out and side-by-sides in vehicles and try to find folks that are potentially having illegal campfires or camping illegally, and try to educate them and provide resources. That's really evolved in the last ten years. Sergeant Dustin Coons is sitting in the back. He actually supervises the Wood Watch program as well, as well of a variety of other programs. And what we do is we take helicopter flights. We started using Coconino County's airplane. It flew too fast. We use Flagstaff Ranger, which is from Arizona Department of, Department of Public Safety. We take flights, and then we GPS camps, then their location's on the ground, and then we go out to the camps and provide resources and education, and we issue warnings. One thing we also do is we document those camps and the occupants if they're there, and we document them in the report so we know who is in the woods at what time. So one thing that I was wanting to know after hearing concerns from council and people in the public is how many campers do we have in the community right now that are in our woods, potentially staying warm by fires? So we took a flight last week. It was very windy. Our Sergeant Coons and we went up with Coconino County Sheriff's Office. They survived a windy helicopter ride, and we found, we did about half the city, and there's approximately fifteen camps or tarps set up or vehicles that appear to be in the wooded area. So we're going to start operations as soon as this week. We're going to go out, identify those camps, and try to provide services. We're very sensitive to people experiencing homelessness. Sometimes that's the, the population that's in the wooded area that maybe are looking for alternatives to housing. Sometimes people just don't want to be around services and want to be alone. So our goal is to, to provide services. We give a list of flyers to, to anybody, any camp we contact, and try to provide warnings to get that compliance. We've had good success with that in the past, but usually we start up about May or June. This year, we're going to start in February because that concern's out there for everybody. The fire department could probably give you a better answer on this, but a majority of these wildland fire, fires are human-caused, and so we're very sensitive to that. One thing we do, once we contact the camp, we take pictures of it. We take a police report, and we try to educate anybody that's in that camp. We do have a city ordinance that applies to city, state, federal land, but doesn't apply to private property. So what our officers do, they're experts in this. When they contact a camp, they look at the GPS, they figure out which land they're on. If they're on private property, our city ordinance doesn't apply. If they're on city property or federal property, then we can issue warnings and go about that way. One thing we're looking to do is we start our weekly Woods Watch operation, is we're going to partner with the fire department. We hope to bring a firefighter with us. So if we... So if we locate a camp that maybe is having illegal campfires or unsafe fires, we can possibly remedy that situation right on site, and then also be able to provide just more service to folks looking for some resources. So every year, it's differed. Like Paul said, some years, you know, we have to do very little Woods Watch because the snowpack lasts through June, and we start getting rain. This year, it doesn't seem to be the case, and we're starting very early. So thank you.
So one, one happy coincidence that I'll just tag on with Chief C's great message. We had to delete a couple slides late, so I just wanted to make sure that we articulated this point. You know, one thing that's coming out of this that's great is it's bringing police, fire, and emergency management to a meeting table once a week to develop this program. And under Chief C's direction, that was actually, those were actually the words he used, let's get together once a week until we can figure this out. And then this was a kind of a result, one of the negative impacts of COVID. So we really haven't had the Woods Watch program up since 2020. You know, the reality of it was, we couldn't put two people in a UTV or side-by-side, social distancing, those types of things. So this will be the first year since 2020 we've been able to stand that back up. So that's something that we're really excited about. Chief?
Thank you, Paul. So that was engineering, excuse me, that was education enforcement. The next group that we're going to be talking about is the engineering piece. Flagstaff has made a significant investment in engineering over the last 30 years. When you consider the definition that we use for engineering is we're going to change the natural space to a safer, more environmentally sound, a healthier forest, and a more resilient forest. And so for us, that work is represented by the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project. And that is also a source of pride in our community. I think that equates for every one of those $10 million in funding, another, that represents another $4 or $5 of outside funding that came in and matched us and made our dollars go even further. So it's a big deal in the context of the natural environment, the wildland fire environment. It also applies to downtown. We're working with redevelopment occurring, and redevelopment, taking four single-family dwellings and perhaps moving to a mid-rise, and having streets around that mid-rise that perhaps were never really intended to support that many residents on the site. So working with community development to make sure there's adequate space for fire apparatus access, adequate whist for ladder service, that's a part of engineering the safe environment. So we're continuing to work in all these areas. One of the areas I want to bring to your attention is the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and we've got our partners here. Neil and Jay are here to kind of talk about and provide you with information on where we're at with the Community Wildfire Protection Project that's going on currently. Thank you for being here. Jay?
Go ahead, you go first. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about the county's role in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So we decided, after we spoke with the city and Neil, as he was planning to put in for a CWDG, a Community Wildfire Defense Grant, for the Greater Flagstaff Area CWPP, we were putting in for the same grant, utilizing the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership. And we had Ann Montec write the grant for us, and then she will manage the grant for us. But we're doing a rural fire district and Indigenous Tribes CWPP. So we're going to cover 10 rural fire districts in the county and up to six Indigenous tribal communities as well. Navajo Nation, we found out, already has one, thank goodness. So we may not have to worry about working with them as much as far as getting them a CWPP, but some of the other tribal lands have never had one. So we're having to kind of start from scratch with ours, where Neil's has one that's been updated a few times. Ours, some of our communities have never even had a Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So we're going to work getting those, those plans in place. Those plans will include, so they're a little bit more basic, kind of getting back to the grassroots of these plans based on what, you know, Neil's getting to get into more of the newer technology. We're going to be establishing really base maps for these communities so they understand what is the risk out there, developing that wildfire risk assessment for them. And this is going to cover Chihuahua Estates West, Tucson, Forest Lakes, Blue Ridge, Page. We haven't been able to get Fredonia on board yet, and then some of the tribal communities. We're going to do fire behavioral modeling for them, do a risk assessment of the occurrence, of how often a fire may occur in those areas. Treatment prioritization, help them understand where they need to do treatments. One that I really like is they're going to, we're going to look at, what is their firefighting capability and readiness if they have a fire? So kind of help these rural fire districts understand, what do they need? Do they need more equipment? Are they ready for a wildfire if it occurred? We're going to look at post-fire flood risk. And then, once we get the act, the plan in place, there will be an action plan with that so that we don't just leave them with, okay, here's something that's great to look at, but this is going to identify areas to be actionable and get some work done. And then we will develop an RGIS hub and a story map to go along with it. So what we want is people in their neighborhoods and their communities to not see a paper document on a shelf, but to be able to come online, look at their parcel, get a little idea of where the risk is around their community, and hopefully, we can then build some community activism to do something about that. So that's what the county's doing, and I know Neil's got a lot going on, even more cooler stuff with the city.
Yeah, so in case you hear about it, Jay and the county are taking the lead on a county-wide plan, but then the existing one that was first drafted in 2005 and updated in 2012 and 2018 is based on our Ponderosa Fire Advisory Committee Group. So that basically is Summit Fire to the north, down to Sedona, west over to parks, but Ponderosa, I can't remember if Camp Navajo is plugged in exactly into that or not, and then east over to Mormon Lake. So think of it as kind of our aid network of the fire districts and department in this area. And so we're going to have two Community Wildfire Protection Plans coming together. Because of ours, we kind of already have that baseline that's been updated a couple times. Using the funding that's out there, we're going to be able to do a little more fine-scale development in some of the details of that plan. But the big picture is we're going to have all the county, all the way down, both tiered together in these Community Wildfire Protection Plans, some shared objectives within those details, and it makes us eligible for other funding opportunities once we get all these things tied together. So we should have more information on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan process coming very soon.
And not to, I know Neil and I've been discussing this, not to bring a negative side of this, but this all is dependent upon the Community Wildfire Defense Grant funding coming to be available for us. We're kind of in that flux right now, waiting to see where that funding's going to go.
Okay, our next deep dive is going to be, and it's very much part of engineering, is the design and the capability of a community's water system, particularly firefighting water system and developing fire flows. And our interim director is here to walk us through that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Lee Williams, Operations Section Director for Water Services, and I am here because we can, we can protect all we want, but once a fire starts, you need water to put it out. So I'm here to talk about our water system. First slide up here, we talk about our water production and our storage. Our system is quite resilient. It is, we're able to produce twice as much as the peak demand in summertime. Summertime's about 10.8 million gallons. We're able to produce about 20 million gallons per day with all of our sources. We have five main sources. Sorry, talking to the microphone a little more here. We have five main sources, and they're spread out. They're in different areas of the city, so if a wildfire came through one area, we would still be able to maintain several others. Our 21 million gallons of storage is 1.8 days at our peak demand. That doesn't mean that we're going to, every tap is going to go dry 43 hours after the power goes out, should that happen. The city is designed to have different pressure zones, different reservoirs, and the water flows through different ways. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And power resiliency, without electricity, we don't have water. We use electricity to pump water out of the ground with our wells. We use electricity to pump water out of the lake into the plant. We use electricity to run those pumps and all of those purification devices. So electricity is very important. We have diesel generators on standby, and we have a 1,000-gallon fuel truck to haul fuel to those different generators. It's a little different than the first one I saw. All right, let me go back to that one then. Power resiliency, I just want to touch on that. In 2018, Council gave us a direction to buy diesel generators, backup power, and put in transfer switches at our critical junctions. Because of that, we are able to continue to produce water even during a major power failure. And we are currently in the process of adding that ability to half of our Woody Mountain Well Field, which will make us even more resilient. I want to say that nobody knew this at the time, but you were way ahead of the curve on that, and that has saved a significant amount of stress and planning in the last year. Because in the last year, APS, our power provider, has told us that they're going to engage in what's called a Public Safety Power Shutdown, a PSPS event. When the meteorological conditions are such that a fire could break out, they shut down certain transmission lines, and that is going to shut down power to our wellfields when that occurs. Because you gave us the directive in 2018 to put those diesel generators and transfer switches in, that will give us the ability to be much more resilient in the case of a power shutdown, which, we know, the meteorological conditions for fire, there's a higher chance of a wildfire during that, in which case, we need more water. Where are we at here? Fire protection. I'd like to talk a little bit about our hydrants and our distribution system. Our distribution system is built to engineering standards that meet AWWA standards. It's American Water Works Association. It's a national standard for fire hydrants. They recommend at least 250 gallons per minute for a two-hour duration. All of our hydrants within city limits are capable of producing 1,000 gallons per minute for that same duration. So we're able to stay ahead of the curve on that one also. And they're also spaced, they're closely spaced together for easy access so that our fire crews can run hoses from the hydrants to the trucks to do what they need to do. System strengths, we have gravity-fed reservoirs, so places like down in the valley, Phoenix, a lot of times, they pump water into the system to create pressure that takes electricity. When the power goes out, they have some reserve, they have air pressure to push water into the system. In Flagstaff, we pump water to elevated reservoirs up on the hills around town, and even if the power goes out, that water will continue to gravity-feed into town. And we can monitor those reservoirs with our SCADA system. I talked about that a couple days ago at the last council meeting. SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. It gives our operators a chance to look at the entire system from a computer monitor. So we can monitor those levels, and we can deploy those generators to different booster stations to keep the ones full where it needs to be. So if there's a fire on the west side of town, we can keep those railroad springs tanks full. Let's see here, I think I mentioned the ongoing infrastructure upgrades. We're putting a generator capabilities out at Woody Mountain. And just a finishing note here, Flagstaff's water system is redundant, resilient, and built for reliability. Should I touch on the ISO, the insurance services? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Council, the ISO rating for the community for Flagstaff is an ISO Class II. One is the best you can have. 10 is literally no fire protection available. And there is plenty of that in our state. There's, there's, there is three things, there are three things that go into the determination of the community's ISO rating. The first one is its fire department, staffing, how many people are on duty? Do you have the appropriate and required equipment? The second one is communications. What that is referring to is, do you have a 911 center? Does your PSEP dispatch resources to the call? Is it redundant? Is there redundancy there? And the last one is your water supply. And our water supply is a source of our strength in that ISO rating. It's a good ISO rating. It's a good water supply, well-maintained by our water team. One of the things that's really important to note is when, and I don't want to speculate because I don't want to necessarily recap what we heard in the news about water supply in California, because we don't really know yet. Those reports haven't been written. But there's been a lot of attention given to the failure of a water system. We'll tell you that this water system is designed to provide fire flows for a building that is on fire. The larger buildings require more than 1,000 GPM, and we have that in our state or in our, in our system. There isn't, there isn't, to my knowledge, a municipal or fire-water system developing fire flows sufficient to put out structure after structure after structure going through a community in a conflagration. That system hasn't been designed, to our knowledge. So I think realistic expectations for us is we apply the five Es to our community. We try to keep that occurrence from occurring in our community by being really well-adjusted, investing in each one of the five Es.
Councilmember Spence, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chief, is, can you give us any specifics on what it would take for Flagstaff to get from a Level 2 ISO to the best Level 1 rating?
I will have to revisit that issue, Councilmember Spence. I know the last time we, we actually kind of protested our Class 2. We thought we should be a Class 1, and we worked with ISO in that context, and it was a daily staffing issue. But to bring quantitativeness to that, I'll have to do a little bit of legwork, and we can work with the manager's office to forward that information.
Thank you. I'm assuming that people's fire insurance rates would go down if we were Level 1 instead of Category 2?
It can, but it's more complex than that. For instance, when there's built-in fire protection, the ISO rating sometimes is somewhat marginalized. In our historic buildings, that do not have fire protection, it is very important in the development and the determination of what they will pay for fire insurance, fire insurance premiums. And this, if I may, separate the issue, the crisis going on in fire insurance in the community associated with cancellations and widespread increases of up to three times, that has to do with the underwriting that's occurring associated with wildland fires. We are working in that arena as well, trying to bring about some positive change. So I will have Neil come up and talk a little bit about some of the other engineering aspects.
Thank you, Chief. So when we think about engineering and the five Es, we really think about both the built environment, so the structures, natural environment, the landscape surrounding our community. And this is, this is a new tool that we're working on, trying to add some more of these tools in our toolbox. But when we think of the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project, that means three priority areas, Upper Rio de Flag watershed, Lake Mary watershed, and city limits. Over time, we've built out about 56,000 acres of projects within that footprint. We've seen about 18,000 acres accomplished, and we see about 3,000 acres of beneficial fire annually. But, but I don't want to say that's enough. There's some new stuff that we can be doing out there, where we're really not just looking at fire on our landscape, but where fire is going to move fast through our landscape. There's a lot of emerging data that shows we lose more structures in this country every year to fast-moving grass fires than that traditional catastrophic crown fire that we think of so often. So fast-moving grass fires, that's, that's a concern. The reality is our thinning projects don't remove the risk of fast-moving grass fire. We're removing that risk of crown fire, which is really important, because fast-moving grass fire is mitigated very well with defensible space and home hardening and effective wildland firefighter response. So this new partnership we have with a company called Xyloplan is showing us some of these new potential fast-moving fire pathways. So we're not just looking at thinning the landscape around Flagstaff and doing that big donut of treatments, but these really specific areas where it's not just in the forest in these areas, but think about what can we be doing on these special red lines on the map to slow that fire spread from the natural environment into the built environment? And then Xyloplan's even building some additional models of potential pathways through the built environment. Traditionally, you would run a fire model where we can basically simulate good fire, bad fire, basically running fire through a forest, a grassland, whatever type of environment. There's models out there for all of them. Now we're starting to see some of those models transition where it doesn't just shut down when that fire hits the neighborhood, but we can now model the fire through the neighborhood as well. So engineering in the natural environment, we have our knowns of doing that risk reduction thinning, doing the fire to maintain those thinning projects, but we're now even focusing even more of a microscope and using these pathways. And then engineering in the built environment. So through a partnership with some, some great folks at Colorado State University, we're getting some really cool new data, and we asked them to do the And we asked them to do the Flagstaff area, and they kind of gave us a demo, and they started doing it for the whole county. So, really cool partnership here that's turning out to be county-wide. But we're starting to see some of this data, again, that shows structure vulnerability. So, this, this map right here, this slide, red is highly vulnerable, as it transitions to blue, it's less vulnerable. And, you know, the red isn't just on that perimeter of the forest. There's a lot of vulnerability that this model's showing us inside the community. And, and so the advantage of us starting to get our hands on more of a refined model here is that we can start to tweak the model and say, if we invest heavily in defensible space and home hardening in this part of a neighborhood, does that add, or does that reduce vulnerability to the rest of the neighborhood? So while we want to be doing home hardening and defensible space everywhere, we don't have enough resources to do it everywhere. So where's our biggest bang for the buck? Where are those pinch points as that fire potentially transitions from the natural environment into the built environment? So we're going to be working with those, those modelers a lot more moving forward. We also have our International Wildland Urban Interface Code that was mentioned earlier, was adopted in 2008. We're working on an update to that code. And then our Forest Management Plan and Resource Protection Standards and landscaping codes, that we're trying to modernize a lot of those to really better understand how we can have the right codes in the right places and still maintain the visual appeal of, of living in a ponderosa pine forest. So you'll be seeing a lot more of this as we move forward. I'd like to mention our partnership with the Gordon and Betty Moore Foundation as well. They funded the preliminary pathways and, and structure vulnerability modeling for us.
We have two questions. I'm wondering whether you discussed why those areas were more vulnerable than other areas?
Yep, it's, it's largely driven by topography, and then their scenario, they ran here. We basically took the weather of the day of the pipeline fire, and we ran that, that weather scenario into this model. So southwest winds, it's firing, following a good amount of topography, it's following some roads. Those roads kind of become pathways of fast-moving fire spread along the road. But we're still trying to figure out exactly what this stuff means, go out and ground-truth some of it. You know, it's, it's Xyloplan's secret sauce to kind of come up with these models, so some of it has to stay a little mysterious. But the, but the reality is, we'll, we'll try to better understand exactly where these pathways are in the landscape, and, and what do we do about them? So for example, there's a 500-acre parcel that was recently sold. It was state land that we're working with the developers to better understand. Is there a way they could start to incorporate this model that says, these, these red lines right here are the potential fire pathway into a planned community? Can we potentially build that community recognizing these risky areas and design it a little differently now that we have this information? So we're still, this, this is all brand-new and lots that we still have to understand, but, but mostly topography-driven.
And there's been a lot of treatment done in this area of town, right?
Yep.
So the next slide, the second picture that shows the red, do you, is that also topography?
So, this is completely different. This would be where they, I still don't understand exactly his formula. He's got this really spooky-looking formula that he shows us. They run this model more along the lines of virus spread than they do traditional vegetation-carrying fire. So they're looking at structure distance, structure design. This was the preliminary version where, if we get a little more funding, we can get down to that parcel level. They actually start looking at the documents that we have around how each individual house has been built, and then they start looking at the vegetation around that structure, and they start refining it even further. This model was about 84 accurate, 84% accurate in predicting structure losses in the campfire that burned the town of Paradise. And so, if you see down in the corner here, we've got university heights, and, and it's kind of on the, where that fire pathway would have been coming into that southwest. We kind of see that where that line going in through the community, you know, we'll have to zoom in a lot more, but these things are starting to align pretty well. But again, it's giving us that tool where to direct the limited resources that we have to have the biggest impact in that community.
Councilmember Matthews, and then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Neil. On one of your slides, you talked about where you're focusing efforts to, for mitigation, and one of them was, one of the bullet points was inside the city limits. Can you just expand on that a little bit more? What are you doing? And I, I reflect back at the picture you sent me, and then you sent to council on the extreme density that we have within the city limits. Like, we were all focused on the forest and like, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I think it's, 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 it's an important topic. Inside the city limits, we have over 12,000 acres of the Coconino National Forest inside city limits. So we're not just talking about, you know, people's private property. We've got about 4,000 or so acres of open space that has ponderosa pine trees on it. So when we mix in the open space, the state land, and the Forest Service land, we have over 20,000 acres of ponderosa pine, functioning ponderosa pine forest inside city limits. And then we start looking at treatments on those. Traditionally, we know, we, we mobilize a forestry plan, we find funding, we get a logger in there. It's all ecological restoration-based thinning. We restore that natural structure and pattern. We're pretty good at that. I think we are a national model of being good at that. What we haven't been as effective at is getting that risk reduction on the private land as well. So we're really starting to take a lot of these efforts at looking at, you know, we've got the thinning on the landscape, how do we start mobilizing in some of these areas? That when you look at the map and you see what the thinned forest looked like, it's dark, it's dense where all the roofs are. So we need to start being a little more aggressive with how we work with homeowners and, and how we find the economic incentives, that we'll get into in another slide here, to help the homeowners do this work. It's expensive, it's complicated, but it's a driving need right now that we really need to be, you know, we can't just be in the neighborhood looking in the forest, we need to be in the neighborhood looking in the neighborhood. And, and I think we're well-positioned as we, I don't want to call it a transition, because we've been doing this for a long time. But for example, we see 40-plus million dollars a year in the federal government going into four-fry to do the landscape work. We had a $10 million bond that voters approved, 74% of voters approved that, to do the thinning work in our community. We don't have that kind of horsepower when we're standing in your driveway right now, but we're working on it.
So, the bullet point about the, the resource protection overlay, science is driving some additional changes to that, so that we don't have to go back and, you know, harden our areas. We can, maybe the development will just bring new updated science to what's realistic and what's fire-wise.
I know Tiffany, I went back and watched the recording, and it cracked me up. She says, I run down to her office at least like once a week saying, we've got to change this. And it's more than once a week. And so we've got plans to try to do a pilot project. We're working on the narratives and the details of all this stuff before we, we put the proposal in front of you. We've got to refine it a little further. But the plan is to take some of these technologies that we've been using in the woods, like LiDAR to do inventory, where we get an image of every single tree. We can tell the big trees, we can tell the wide trees. Basically, we can identify those heritage trees using remote sensing technologies across hundreds of acres very easily, very cheaply. And then we can start to apply that to how we design the community in these areas that haven't been built yet. So rather than just going through and arbitrarily cutting to a, a science-based density, now we're going to say, well, we'd like to better understand exactly what that neighborhood is desired to look like, and then we start designing the tree retention plans to combine where we know the homes and the roads and the driveways are going to be. And then when we have that information up front, the developer can now start to say things like, ooh, there's a big block of these heritage trees over here. Maybe we put, sorry, maybe we put some sort of development plan that protects that area and focuses higher densities in a different spot where we don't have those heritage trees. So utilizing the, the technology we've been using on the landscape in the woods, we're bringing those people into the neighborhood now. Yep.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thanks for the presentation, and the, this question was mainly answered by what, by what you just described. So if there, if you have answered it appropriately, then we'll just move on with it. But I was thinking back to, you know, the, the forest restoration projects that have created that somewhat of a donut and a bit of dispensable space, I guess you could maybe call around the city, that now we're kind of focusing in more on the city itself and the density of the trees in there. Would you say that, in your opinion, that that restoration, the projects that have taken place over the last, you know, 30, 40 years, that have kind of created that somewhat of a buffer zone around Flagstaff, has evolved in, in how they replant the forest? Because when I look at those areas, I see something that looks a lot different than the natural forest. And to me, I, I wonder if that's going to promote wildfire danger?
You know, we, we rarely ever go into a green stand and plant trees. So sometimes when you see that carpet, it's natural regeneration occurring in a really crazy way, because we're not getting fire back in those areas quick enough. And so, that's a big challenge when we see some of these areas that have been thinned, and then, you know, five, 10 years later go by, and you're like, where'd all these trees, trees come from? We didn't plant them. That was that cone crop coming in that, historically, that ground fire of every two to five years would have been wiping those trees back, and a couple would survive. And so that's a big challenge for us, not just in trying to maintain the health of the, the overstory, but to some degree minimizing the overgrowth of the understory. And the best way to do that is to get some good prescribed fire back into those sites. And I think in, in the, the black areas, the burned areas, the tree planting is a big struggle. You know, the percentage of survivable trees in the, mostly in the Forest Service areas, where they've done the, the regeneration plantings, they're just struggling to get those trees to survive. A lot of trees that were planted post-Schultz fire burned up in the pipeline fire. But there were some lessons learned about making sure you clear those areas out better before you plant all those trees in there, so I hope we'll, we'll have some more success moving forwards. But yeah, that, that carpet of regen is rarely ever somebody planting. It's just the lack of getting that fire back in in quick enough time.
Thank you. Proceed.
I think that was my last slide, economic incentives.
Thank you, Neil. Economic incentives, and this, I think, is for us here at Flagstaff is going to be a very important part of our strategic discussion going forward. It's going to be really difficult for a private property owner to, on their own, conduct hardening operations and, and fuel removal that will protect themselves and their neighbors. And then stringing a couple of those along a street. And then, now, two streets in that neighborhood. That's, that's what progress is going to look like, one private property parcel at a time. Future looks for us, or how do we, how do we identify funding streams? Hopefully somebody else's money, of course. How do we identify funding streams to help protect the community in that regard? There's a number of things that are going on in the community to create choices and, and help reduce risk. Chief Ultrugi and Neil are working with a group. They represent the state of Arizona on a, an effort in most of the southwestern states funded by the Western Fire Chiefs Association, developing mitigations that matter. And that, that's a really important piece. We talked about the Insurance Services Office rating and its importance to the city and the city's property owners who purchase property insurance. Air filtration program where we can put resources in the hands of our citizens that might need a little help dealing with the smoke. Great program. We work with our partner in sustainability on as well. And then Hazardous Fuel Mitigation Grant Support Program is a source of pride as well. And we'll let our team talk a little bit and do a little bit of a deep dive into some of these. But we, we are having a lot of impact in the community. And for us, it's about finding ways to stretch and, and to improve our reach with respect to those.
Sorry, I was wrong. One more slide. So, so jumping back real quick, Chief mentioned it earlier, our Forest Management Partnerships. Within that $10 million bond, we can point to an additional $50 million in partner investments that we've seen come into the, into those three priority areas. So really, it, it's taking that leadership role in our community has, has great benefits. So our wildland fire mitigation grants, so when Mark Adams or one of our staff comes to a house to do that assessment, very often we have some funding. We can, we can incentivize some of this work. Most of this funding is through agreements with the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management that then is a mix of federal and state dollars. So how it works is we do an assessment, and we say, hey, it looks like you need to cut some trees over here. We might have some funding we can help you out with. And so if that parcel qualifies, our staff will then mark the trees either that stay or trees that get removed based on which one's easier. And then that parcel owner then selects the vendor. So we don't pay the vendor, the homeowner then has a contract with the vendor, and then we reimburse the homeowner, and it works out really well. Most of the times, we get them back that funding that we can provide within 30 days. Our, that's one thing that I think our people in the community really appreciate, that if they, they have that assurance that if they front some money to do this work, that our system here in the city will get them that reimbursement pretty quick. And then our, our city staff put the billing package together on a quarterly basis back over to the, to the state. And so, since 2015, this program's really ramped up. I'll give kudos to the Department of Forestry and Fire Management. We see a lot more investment of the state dollars there. But we've seen over $750,000 come into the community through those grants over the last few years. And it's a pretty seamless process. I think one struggle we have with it is it's based on the number of acres of your property. So we can give you more money, the more size, the, the larger your parcel, to help offset these costs. So what it doesn't do is help that person with a, with a quarter-acre property that has 10 grand worth of tree work, because there's three big trees right next to their house. So this is where we're still trying to find some different pathways on, on how we can potentially do the hazard tree work, not just the hazardous fuel reduction at, at that kind of parcel, larger parcel scale.
Okay, then the next E is the emergency response piece. And one of the things we want to talk about is the emergency response piece relative to that top-of-mind incidents in California. And so, one of the reasons why it's important, in our view, to talk about the five Es is there isn't a place in the United States where you can find more firefighters than in Southern California. Well-articulated mutual aid systems, well-practiced, wildland firefighting, there's not more resources anywhere than there is there. And yet, topography, wind events, certainly. But we think that part of the solution to protect our community is we need to advance in all of these areas. So there's no one area that we need to address in the community to protect it. We've got to advance mitigations in the five Es. For us, every day, that's emergency medical services, fire suppression, wildfire response and management through the, the W F M. The care unit is a, is a piece of that, as it keeps our emergency response units in service so that we can be available for those types of emergencies. Your, your fire department is the hazmat and technical rescue department for northern Arizona. We support the police department with SWAT medics, and then we have critical partners associated with emergency management. So that's the emergency response piece. Important for us to advance along with the other Es as well. Just for kind of a components of, of fire department staffing, we like to kind of always talk about line staff and then support staff. And, and certainly within any fire department organization, the line staff is those outward-facing services where we go out and provide an emergency, sometimes not emergency services. Support staff for us, that administrative training logistics function, fire prevention personnel that are ensuring that, you know, we put the training and the resources and all the things that our folks need to go out and do their work in their hands. And that takes a big effort within the fire department as well. We'll talk a little bit about.
So, there's a reason that we, that we save response for last. And that's because what we've learned over, over the, the time of the program, that the Wildland Fire Management Program here at the City of Flagstaff began in 1997 up until now, present day, is that we don't have the ability to treat fire like a battle enemy, right? Like, we can't, we can't fully rely on suppression. We can't fully rely on just more resources and just more firefighters. And if we can just turn one more corner, then we'll be able to put this fire out. That might work for that day, but then what about the next fire, right? And so that's why we've, we've listed all those other things that we do and all the technical stuff that Neil got into, which is, which is really great work. We want to make sure that we're communicating with the best researchers, the best minds, and the best scientists in the industry currently when we're putting our products forward and deciding what to do. And so, and, and, you know, I just want to put one more plug in there. That's those vulnerabilities that Neil talked about in the natural and built environment. That's a lot of what we want to talk about when, when, when we are able to take, take you folks around town and, and pointed some of that.
town and pointed some of that stuff and talk about it and step over it and look at it and have really thoughtful conversations around that. But as we wrap up what we do for response, Mayor, back to your comment. I think we're coming to that slide now on the National Fire Danger Rating System is what it's called. And I intentionally put the, we'll call it a flow chart on the right side of that slide there to look a little bit more complicated because I want us to remember that these decisions are not made in a vacuum and they're not made simply. These are complicated decisions. And fuel moistures, things like resources available, fuel weather, all those different components, topography, Neil talked a lot about that. All of that goes into designing an output, which is that fire danger rating system which you see around town, which is low, moderate, high, very high, or extreme. For one of the first times in the history of Flagstaff, through most of January and into February, we were in high and very high. That obviously typically doesn't occur. We've spoken plenty about that. The good news I want to leave you with tonight is with that little bit of moisture that we got over the last week, week and a half, we've necked back down to moderate. And so that gives us more planning space, that gives us more time, that gives us more opportunity to communicate with those federal and state partners that we have and plan for our severity staffing as we roll into the season. Again, more unanswered questions there. We don't know what all that's going to look like. Typically, as we come into this time of year, we would have that information a little bit more specific and nailed down. But until we understand a little bit more what's going on with some of our federal partners, that will necessarily be the case. Training is always where we're going to put most of our effort into because when we have the really bad day, we don't, for one, we don't want to get anybody hurt. We have 90 firefighters, we have nine wildland fire personnel, we have all those folks that are going to be responding to those fires. We want to make sure that they're highly trained and that the actions they're taking on the ground are muscle memory, right? So we're meeting the minimal standard for those, for wildland fires nationally, and that's every firefighter within the Flagstaff Fire Department, not those just within wildland fire. And so we train with them a minimum of 24 hours annually. And to put a little perspective to that number, I think each firefighter is required to put in 220 hours of training annually. And that's for everything. That's for EMS, that's for structured fire, that's for extrication, that's for all that stuff. And so being able to have a little slice of that and have 24 hours dedicated specifically to wildland fire is a big deal. And then we have members that have been in front of you before, myself, Neil, others within the department, that move on to further qualifications and training beyond that minimum standard. As an example, I think we had just eight of our folks in Los Angeles for two weeks helping with that response. And then we'll, excuse me, continue that into the fire season. I think that's it for me. And SPK?
I'm your last slide. Aren't you excited? No. Stacy Recklennaggs, Emergency Management Director. Just a little bit, and I'm here also with Daniel Kelly, our emergency manager. If you all know him, maybe some of the new council members don't. So Daniel and I have been growing, developing this new program for the city, which is pretty exciting. Working a lot on preparedness. Been doing our citywide emergency operations plan that you all have seen, and that's been completed. We also just got approval from you all for our continuity of operations plan and our continuity of government plan. And EM Partners, our consultant that did the emergency operations center plan, will be working with us. And that plan is really during disruptions, how we run the government when we have a catastrophic event or something that we're disrupted, that how we're going to operate as a government agency. So you will be involved with EM Partners and hope that that plan is very extensive and we're really looking forward to getting that plan done. The next one that we're budgeting for this next year is a disaster recovery plan and hope to get that funded so that we'll start creating some of these plans for EM. The other thing is we have the emergency alert system. We have the RAVE system. The county has a RAVE system that they use for external, public facing, and they have IPoZ which for another emergency alert system. We have a RAVE system now just for city staff. It's just for internal purposes. Police and fire can use it and we can use it when we have a winter shutdown of the facilities or anything like that. Public Information Officer, Sarah Langley, has been using that. So that's just kicking off the ground. I know Daniel's worked extensively on it and is getting that in place. So we'll have that RAVE alert system for internal purposes. And then community resilience, you heard Sam up here, it was great timing. We're working with our community resilience hubs. We're working with them on preparedness and workshops and been meeting with them on emergency preparedness for our community resilience hubs. And then lastly, we do response. We support the incident management team with the fire department or whatever that may be. We will support them as a resource. We also provide situational awareness to the city manager's office, to the mayor and council. We do coordination during the response. We'll help coordinate resources, logistics, whatever it might be that the fire department needs. And then we'll also serve as a liaison, whether it be between the fire department and the city council or whatever that liaison role might be that will help support during that response effort. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Daniel. If you want to add anything or are we good? All right. Nothing I forgot, so that's good. And then next, Chief, you want to wrap it up?
Mayor and Council, you've been at it a while and you've been really good sports, I might add. And there's a lot of information we've just been bombarding you with. But we had hoped to impart on you a couple of concepts. One is the five Es. It's a balanced approach. It's the need to protect the community will require us to advance in all these areas and put effort in as hopefully you can see we are and we have been. The other piece of it is it's a team sport, you know, all these partners, all these folks that have a piece of that. That's a really important part that we had hoped to impart today. Any questions for this team?
There are lots. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Paul and Neil back there. Is Jay still here? Did he take off? Really appreciate the whole team coming down here and giving us this time. You know, the community is understandably very concerned about our fire preparedness given recent events. And it's definitely within their right to ask for some answers. I think this goes a long way to providing some clarity and clearing up some misunderstandings that are out there. It also shows us, you know, it's an opportunity for us to have an ongoing conversation about what can we do better and what's missing. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions about the specifics of our actual local city plan today. But before we get back into that, I would like to at least mention the elephant in the room a little bit more. It's been alluded to. But, you know, I want to explore more about the impact of what's happening at the federal level on our local fire preparedness. So Chief, while you all decide who gets the short straw for that one, I'll kind of preface the statement a little bit. I was thinking of maybe hearing from Neil, mostly because he has that federal grade mustache. But also, he was part of the federal task force that we haven't heard a lot about today, but I know it's out there. You know, it's not just the fire personnel that matter, and a lot of people don't understand that. I've had several people in the Forest Service very recently explain to me that everybody in the local offices supports during fire season in terms of logistics, planning, supply and delivery, and covering communications and all the rest. So every single layoff that's happening right now at the federal level matters in this community and other communities. This room right now is completely missing our federal partners. We've had this conversation, I've had this conversation with all of you a number of times. We revisit this often because it's that important. It's very concerning to me that we're missing our Forest Service brothers and sisters and, you know, and I know this concern isn't isolated. My wife is hosting fire science workshops through NAU all over Payson and in places in Southern Arizona, and she's had half of her attendees cancel. She's, because the word "science" was in the name of the title of the workshop, Fire Science Workshops. We're dealing with a crusade against science here. And you guys mentioned very strongly a connection between what you're trying to do and preparedness and best practices and being fire wise and having that all be science-based and based on modeling. So I'm very concerned about how we navigate that situation moving forward in the near You know, it's, why am I looking out at these seats and seeing no one? And honestly, Chief, how can we claim fire preparedness if we're missing that whole part of the conversation if they can't even come to the meeting tonight to talk to us, to share with us what they have going on? Much less, you know, sort of allay our fears a little bit and reassure us that the federal resources are still there and available for us when that need comes. And then what do we need to do to protect and restore federal jobs in terms of this community's ability to adequately manage these disasters? I don't think we can do it without them. Everything we've talked about tonight is what we can do. We are stepping up and achieving what we are able to at our capacity. But when these fires come, we're going to need more resources and all these seats are empty.
Councilman Aslan, I would have to say that what's going on in the federal level is evolving, it's evolving on a daily basis. I will tell you that the phone gets answered when we call our partners at the federal level. We're still engaged with them in partnering and planning. Earlier in the month, we had a good conversation.
Chief, can you speak into the microphone?
Thank you. I will restate that our partners, our federal partners are answering the phone. We're still engaged with them in planning. They certainly have some, and it does impact us. It does concern us. They, on a national level, where the federal government's going, we are unclear as are they. And so we're continuing to monitor that situation. I will tell you, earlier in the month, we met and we were having conversations about locating federal assets at the Flagstaff Airport to aid in fast response in the region. So those conversations are still going on. There are more recent conversations that are creating ambiguity, and we're working through those with our partners every day, but we don't have very many answers as to how the city should engage in federal issues. I think you all deal with that quite routinely with respect to your legislative and your national agenda and what you try to support. I think that makes a lot of sense now as well. But we don't have a lot of answers on how that's all going to play out. We certainly agree with your assessment. We need the federal assistance, whether that is grant funds to remove fuels, to conduct planning work, or whether that's boots on the ground. We need firefighters in the greater Flagstaff region. It's unfolding and we're participating to the extent we can.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Loved the presentation tonight. It was much needed in our whole community and it just reconfirms why flag fire and our partners are the gold standard in our country for, you know, fire health, fire mitigation, forest health. So thank you all, Neil, Paul, Mark, you. So just, it makes me, we can't control wildfires from coming here from lightning or man-made and stuff, but it's nice to know that we are on top of it for sure. I had a question, I don't remember who covered it, but it prompted a question in my mind, I think it was you, Chief, when you were talking about redeveloping areas and changing a single-family resident to a mid-rise or a smaller complex. You know, and it made me think about our ongoing discussion on reducing parking requirements. Do you have any off the top of your head thoughts if we were to move more parking out on the street, less parking on the property, I would think that that would, you know, that should be, that should be a consideration when we're looking at those zoning and policy changes of how it's going to impact us if we were to have a fire? What are your thoughts on that?
Councilmember Matthews, that's a question and it is a problem that occurs every time we have redevelopment. It's super easy when you take native undeveloped land and you try to build it new and you insert the engineering that we talked about earlier and make it safe. It gets tricky when we're redeveloping and we're taking existing land uses, existing property uses, and we're converting them to more intense densities. And so that question of parking and do we have enough room to get a fire truck in there is part of the art that goes on every time staff works together. So we're, we definitely have those conversations. I don't have the response in the context of how can we address the parking issue? I don't have that.
I was just curious if, you know, and I'm just saying this out loud for staff, when we're reexamining our policies and our codes, I had not even considered how that impacts fire response. Because even in our new development, you know, we're talking about that reduction. And I hadn't thought about that consequence before until now, so I just wanted to say it out loud.
We have work to do. You saw recently some of the findings from the consulting that's helping us evaluate our codes and standards associated with making the community a place where we support affordable construction and we can support sustainability. And one of the findings early on was that there weren't a lot of improvements suggested by the consultant in the code development arena associated with building and fire and life safety. But that is a conflict that we have to continue to monitor. And we work very closely with the community and development folks. Some of the engineering things that we want to begin to talk about, Neil's talked about, we have some science, we've got some information, we have new things that we think should be considered in resource overlay protection. Tiffany foreshadowed that a little bit with her last appearance before council, that we were bringing some ideas that, and we're working very closely with them to perhaps do a better job of what that resource overlay leaves us with in the context of the safety of the community. What that resource, the single resource that is not identified in the resource overlay protection is the resource of a house or home. And we have a housing crisis and we have a resource overlay that doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily provide or navigate the fact that we need to protect those buildings because those are limited as well and those are important to the community. And so we are looking forward to the opportunity. The team's got some great pilot kinds of things to discuss with you. As we do that, we're probably going to come back and say we have to look at the landscape requirements in the zoning code as well. So we are working with a number of different, based on the new information, a lot of new ways of thinking about old standards within the community.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation from all of the folks that were able to make it here tonight. And I'm not going to belabor the point so eloquently spoken by Councilmember Aslan. But my key concern for tonight was that there wasn't our federal partners in the room, which led to my next obvious concern was, you know, are they going to be there when we pick up the phone and the fire is burning? Now, personally, I feel that the ones that are here, you know, with, that are still, you know, working are wanting to be here with us. But I'm very concerned that there's a reason why they're not here and what that reason is. That's what my concern is. I wish I could ask you that question, but I don't think that you have an answer for it. So I'm going to leave it right there. But I will just mention that I understand budgets. I understand budget cuts. And if anybody out there is listening to me, understand that I would never put my own community's health and safety in peril. community's health and safety in peril over budget cuts. And I hope that the federal government isn't wanting to hurt our community in that way as well. There's a lot of people that deserve to live here and deserve to not be hurt by fire. We'll move on from that, though. And I also wanted to kind of, to give a shout out to the ready, set, go process. And that's something I don't think we think about enough. We always talk about, how can we keep the fire out? But the fact is, Flagstaff has burnt to the ground before in history. You know, there's evidence and stories that are told that it's wiped out quite a bit of, you know, 100 years ago, quite a bit of buildings that were here. So to think that that's not going to happen again would, to me, to me, to be, to me, would be a fantasy. So for the community, I think it's important for us to be realistic and understand that if, when these things happen, it's not an if, but when these things happen, that we are ready to move. And remind the community that, you know, like Neil was mentioning earlier, that there's, sometimes you fight fire with fire, you know, by cascading the ground with a little bit of fire, that can really help the way the forest grows. And through traditional teachings, I have learned that as well, that fire was something to be celebrated because it meant that there was a rebirth coming from that. You know, and that doesn't necessarily speak to city topic-specific things, but through traditions that I believe, you know, Mother Nature will take itself back when we ask too much of Mother Nature. And I think that you guys are doing the best job that I can imagine, that to work with Mother Nature and to make sure that she's taken care of and that we're respecting her as much as possible. But when that day comes that we overstep, then it's on us. It's our onus for building houses in the way of where she wants to burn. Just something to be said. I know that the city manager's office is going to be able to package this presentation in such a way that it can be distributed easily to the community, and that's really what I'm hoping for, is that way, whenever anything comes up, we can just throw this very meticulous and well-rounded presentation that you guys brought to us forward. And lastly, I know you guys already thought of this, but I would like to see drone, you know, as much as you guys need to use the drone to figure out where the campsites are and stuff like that, I'm always into new technology and supporting that new technology. We have a wonderful team, you all have a wonderful team that can help with that. I met him during our awards ceremony, and he talked, he was real happy about his position as a drone pilot. So thank you for that, Chief, and thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember House and then Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for this very in-depth and detailed and information-rich presentation. Chief, you and I met last week and went over some of this, and we talked about it as comparable to drinking from a fire hose, but it's a very important stream for us to dive into. So I appreciate you bringing this information again and for the community. I want to call us back to one of the public comments that was made at the beginning of the meeting from Sam Wiley, talking about the preparedness workshops that are going on within the community and at the resilience hubs. I think that's a really important thing for us to be able to share out to our communities and our neighborhoods, that those sorts of workshops are being presented. In terms of, and I think all of my comments kind of focus in on the education component of this, you and I spoke about this briefly, but I will always kind of draw back to and bring up, reiterating how to engage multifamily management and communities in some of this education and work. Neil made the comment earlier about how many of us had engaged in having our properties assessed. Well, I live in an apartment, so I don't have a driveway for people to do that. But we can still be educated on how we can be prepared in apartment communities and in multifamily, not only at the community management level, but also as residents ourselves. What do we need to be mindful of when it comes to simple, or things that are seemingly as simple as working on a vehicle or grilling on the property, especially during fire season? I used to work in multifamily, and two of the major struggles that we had were knowing exactly what the education to the community needed to be when it came to fire restrictions, what kinds of grills could people use on the property, and also the ready, set, go and the emergency alerts. We had a very challenging time trying to get our residents signed up for that and utilizing that system when it came to any of the alerts that came up during some of the most recent catastrophic fires. At the community where I live and worked at the time, there was a smaller fire in a neighborhood right behind us that resulted in a set notification, and almost none of our residents that were signed up even really knew what that meant and thought that it meant that there was like fire looming on our property. So it was just a very confusing thing because there's not a lot of education there. I think my question then that I would bring forward for the full team is what types of resources exist that you all might recommend that we as council members actually can share out to support particularly that education component? For example, maybe a month ago, I shared out a series of webinars that was put on by the Southwest Fire Science Consortium, talking about the human causes of wildfires and things like that. But unless you're kind of signed up for or know that those things are happening, I think I just kind of stumbled across it. I wouldn't have known to be able to share that out with our community. So are there places that you would recommend that we go to get some of that information that we can start then sharing out from our place on this day?
I'll let Paul come up. Paul's team is kind of developing the communications planning, collaboration with city communications and everyone in the context of, what are those messages? How can we get them out? And what specific community risk do we need to address? Some parts of our community has the largest concentration of seniors. Some parts of our community are in the wildland urban interface, directly involved in that. Other parts of the community might be where multifamily dwelling, where mid-rise residential development is occurring. Each of them has their own specific educational need that we need to do to try to manage their risk. So really good question, and I'll let Paul take a stab.
I'll start it. Councilmember House, thank you so much. Thank you for that great question. And, you know, I think I would start with the communications plan. That's something that I was tasked with probably about six months ago. And I've worked with our internal public information officers, and we developed that. We ran it by Chief Gaylor for final approval, I think, a week ago. I'm going to mail that out. I'm going to make a note. I'm going to mail that around to mayor and council tomorrow so that everybody can see what that looks like. And when I say it's an annual communications plan, really divvied up by month and quarter, and that's not to the benefit of how we communicate internally with each other, it's to the benefit of how we as a fire department communicate with the community that we serve at every individual level. You know, in tonight's presentation, there were two QR codes and a link to an evacuation map. You know, the QR codes, one was for ready, set, go. One was for restrictions. You were talking about how it's been really confusing for years on what you do with your charcoal or your on-off switch grill. So Neil and I confused each other with that two or three years ago and finally decided that we needed to address that in its simplest form, partnered with Sarah. But not everybody has access to a smartphone, right? So there are ways that we need to, that we need to continue those conversations and make sure that we're educating and informing and giving opportunities to every member of the community. We could come back and we could give another presentation on that. We try to do, I'm asking Neil to tag-team this with me so that he can speak to some of the work that him and Mark Adams are doing. But there are a number of different town halls going right now, home assessments and different things like that. But Neil, if you don't mind, I'll take a step left.
Always open to suggestions. So if you have ideas on how we can better communicate, please tell us. We, when folks are looking for information, we can send them a couple places. We've got some great resources on our Flagstaff Fire Department website. A group that's been around in Flagstaff since the mid-1990s, the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership, has a website. There's a products tab, and there's lots of really good information there. And then for folks that may not be so into doing digital sort of learning, grab copies of that Ready, Set, Go action guide from us, the Wildfire Action Guide. That's just such a useful document to put in people's hands, even if you're not looking at defensible space or harm hardening, there's a great suggestion list in there for evacuation planning. And even in apartment buildings, we're still eligible to come out and talk to folks about potentially the vegetation around the building. And maybe if there's an HOA, we love talking to them because then they become messengers for us as well. So we also work with Northern Arizona University on a lot of research. So we just got preliminary study or findings back. They're working on a white paper which should be out in a few months. But, you know, we did a couple burns in the Observatory Mesa and then in the Jesse Gregg Park, that's an HOA-owned open space within the Lynwood Heights area behind Cheshire. And a bunch of people in that neighborhood were mailed a survey, and we were getting feedback on, you know, did we provide you with adequate information? Where are you getting your information? So we're also going back to the community as much as we can to try to learn, you know, what sort of information are we giving them and is it working? And usually, we're finding that there's a good amount of people that think we're giving them great information, but we're never where we want to be. So we're always trying to find those new sources. Does it mean we need to put somebody in a pickup truck down on the road where they see the smoke and the public and just stop and talk to us? So we've got to, I think, sometimes think more about those person-to-person interactions and not just worry about, oh, it's on our website. So we're trying to get better at that, and that's exactly what some of those NAU surveys are telling us, that sometimes we just need to make sure we have person-to-person interaction options available as well.
Thank you all.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one area that I haven't heard mentioned tonight, and it's an area where I would like to offer a big congratulations. So if I missed it in your presentation, please forgive me. But my congratulation is in the E-emergency response. There are several loudspeakers around our community, which I understand are programmed to alert people who are within earshot of those loudspeakers. And did I miss it, or is that something that is indeed part of our emergency response? And who, to whom should I offer my thanks?
The, I believe, Councilman Spence, you're speaking to a very limited area of the community where we have, and I think that was under the leadership of County Emergency Management, to advance flood warning for those parts of the community that had been devastated by post-fire flooding. And I believe certainly cooperating with County Emergency Management, I believe that is the system that you're speaking to.
Okay, thank you. And can those loudspeakers be used for communicating fire ready, set, go information?
I do not know the answer to that, but I will very soon. And, oh.
Hi, Stacy again, Emergency Management Director. I think you're referring to the museum sirens that were put in that neighborhood for that flooding. They currently can't deal with that fire, you know, prevention right now. But, and then we're, right now, we haven't used that for quite a while. We're working on that spruce wash to mitigate that whole area, so hopefully we won't be needing that type of siren as time goes on, and maybe we can repurpose it.
Thank you.
All right, I have several questions. I want to reiterate what Councilmember Garcia said about getting this portion of the video out. If we could cut it and create its own video and push it out in every avenue that we have to push it out, I would appreciate that, as well as putting just this portion on the website and social media, I think that that would be great. And when to shut the forest, I just want to expand on that a little bit. Because we received so much feedback from the public about it, I, the different jurisdictions and who decides when to do what, and I'm not asking you to get into all of the steps that the Forest Service has to take in order to decide when to shut the forest, but we know, we've seen letters to the editor from people who would like the forest to be closed just on a set day, you know, May 1st, or those types of suggestions. And I know this causes the public a lot of angst because, at least the people we hear from, think that it should be closed sooner. So I'm wondering if you all could speak to that.
We'll have Paul come up. I'll just say that, you know, the, one of the, one of the things that we concern ourselves with is trying to work collaboratively with federal and state lands and the county to be in the same restriction. We think it's very confusing to the public to go, where am I at? Am I on this side of the street? Am I in the city? Are we in restrictions here if I walk across the street? Are we not in restrictions? I think it's part of keeping them safe is to kind of have a consistent blanket restrictions effort across the landscape, which is hard. The major property owner is the federal government that's driving a lot of those, and they also have all the access to the science in the context of what they're seeing in terms of weather, what they're seeing in terms of what condition is the fuel in, and the topography discussions. So it's certainly a relationship piece, and certainly we hear loud and clear the sentiment within the community, particularly our citizens, that say, why aren't we already shut down? I will not speak for the federal government, but I know that our federal partners also deal with a constituency that says, why are you interfering with my ability to recreate? So there are other stakeholders involved, and sometimes it feels more like art than science, and sometimes it feels like a lot of science. Paul, do you have anything to add to that?
I can add a couple of maybe specifics, maybe a little bit of personal opinion, and there may be some representation for my, for our friends on the federal side. Couple of years ago, District Commissioner Matt McGrath came up and gave a presentation that Neil and I introduced for him, and he talked about some more permanent camping and campfire restrictions going in on federal lands, within the city on federal lands, butted up against the city, and then as we move into different levels of fire restrictions, completely locking down and closing the greater San Francisco Peaks area. Where we have a piece of that conversation where we may not have before is on that, every Monday at 1:00 restrictions call. If we all decide collectively to move into a different stage of restrictions, that can now impact those forest closures. Now, as part of being, now, as to being a part of the conversation around forest closures and having a seat at that table, that's not within our scope. That's not what we do. The federal partners within town at the Coconia National Forest, they have to give permissions far above and beyond Flagstaff, regional offices, national offices, a whole lot of different political factors to consider. One thing that we do talk about, though, is Neil and I, you know, when I speak to the person a little bit, is something that we've noticed is when we do take that responsible element out of the forest, when we swing those gates and we have those permanent forest closures for a set amount of time, a number of weeks or whatever that might be, those responsible recreators that are in the forest that might call 911, that might access, all the different systems in place are no longer there, and it pushes some of that, some of that traffic around that may engage in a human caused ignition deeper into the forest. You know, I know that's been one concern that's been voiced in the past. So that's just one example of all the many different nuances that go into that. But that's at least a part of the process that we're a little bit more involved in now, is that restrictions, moving in and out of those different stages of restrictions throughout a fire season.
Thank you. Yes, please.
You know, we, just getting back to a theme we've been talking a lot about tonight, education and preparedness. A big partner of ours that's not here tonight is the Discover Flagstaff team. So a couple of years ago, we started working with Lori Pappas a lot more on some messaging and we got a grant from the International Association of Fire Chiefs to fund some sort of communication strategy. We were very vague in our application. So then we got the grant and we said, Lori, what, how should we spend that money? And she goes, how about some digital targeted media? And we said, sounds great. What does that mean? And so we bought some advertisements online. So when you went to certain websites or on your smartphone and certain apps, advertisements would pop up with their Be Fire Aware campaign. And I don't know all the statistics and what it means, but there's something like 200,000 visitors that were coming to Flagstaff but did not have a phone in our area interacted with that advertisement that came up. So as we continually try to improve the process of restrictions and the science behind it and the closure plans and all of that work, the education and the prevention is probably going to pay more dividends than, than any of those other strategies over time, as there's always going to be that risk of somebody ignoring those rules and cowboying up on their own and doing something catastrophic. So we are seeing, I think, as Paul was saying, positive trends in, in the evolution of those strategies around closures, camping and campfire permanent bans and our education and awareness campaigns in the space as well.
Thank you. This is a question for Aaron about the power resiliency. So we use diesel engines, oh, Lee, we use diesel engines now. Is there, would it still be safe and is there the capabilities to switch to solar with battery storage?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. I, I'm not sure on that. I think the benefits of the diesel, I know it's not the environmentally friendly choice, but they're easily deployable. Diesel fuel is readily available. As far as carting batteries back and forth and the amount, I think the amount of power that we're talking about is, I don't know that batteries, I don't know if the technology is quite there yet. Just for one example, our Tut Hill well is a 600 horsepower motor downhole that pushes water to the surface. So I want to say the electrical bill on that thing is like $1,300 a day. So to power that with batteries, I don't know what size bank you would need, but it's worth considering.
Nicole just posted, I don't think the technology is there yet. So, and I would never even suggest something that didn't guarantee the safety of our power resiliency. I was just curious. Okay, this is for Chief, I think. You, at the beginning of the presentation, you said we have two frontline rescues. Are those just sent out when the responding firefighters request it? So they're already on scene and they see that they need the frontline rescues?
Thank you for the question. No, those are emergency response ready pieces of equipment. So an EMS call, an emergency, they're paramedic and firefighter staffed. And so they will go sometimes by themselves, sometimes with a complement of other apparatus depending on the type of call. But that's a 911 emergency response piece of equipment.
Okay, so the dispatch, and I know we've talked about dispatch a lot and just how well trained they are. They know that ahead of time what needs to get sent out, depending on what call.
Yes, and we're supported by a system. It's a computer aided dispatch system. So typically, I'm going to really oversimplify this. But if we know where the incident is and we know what type of incident it is, then computer aided dispatch will identify the unit that needs to respond. And sometimes it's, in all cases, we want the closest available unit to go. That's what we want. Sometimes that's an ambulance, sometimes it's a, an engine, sometimes it's both. But that's definitely a key part of the importance of the computer aided dispatch.
Thank you. Just one more question. Do responses from the CARE unit count in the overall fire department response numbers?
Yes, they do. We don't scrub them out. What we do is we take a look at the overall impact that the CARE unit is having. And so what we know is if CARE is dealing with a call, we're not taking an emergency response unit out of service to deal with that. But it does, it does get included. And when the CARE is out of service, by example, a red truck goes because we need to send a response. And so after hours, which is less frequent than during the peak periods of the day when we staff the CARE, another truck would go. Those are all included in our overall incident statistics.
Okay, so when we see a rise or a fall in response numbers, we don't, just looking at the, at the numbers that you supplied to us, we don't necessarily know what was red truck, CARE, what type of call it was.
Not in the data that's summarized that we provide you, but we have the ability, for instance, to track how many calls did CARE respond to. And that's a part of the annual report that you have been getting and that you'll continue to get. Because when you see that data set, that tells you the effectiveness of that unit in reducing the response to that type of an emergency by a red truck.
Thank you. And it looks like we don't have any other questions. So as is all of our prerogatives, I would just make a plea to the public to help us in communicating to our federal delegation how important the Forest Service is and full funding for the Forest Service. So in whatever way that that looks like, we're certainly advocating that funding not be taken away and staffing not be taken away. And I just invite the public to join us in doing that as well. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we have two future agenda item requests, both from me. And we're not discussing them, we're just discussing whether we want to put a discussion of them on a future agenda. So my first one was to have a discussion about our fleet electrification policy. And specifically, this came about during a discussion we had about the size of vehicles that were requested by different departments. But I don't know that it needs to be restricted to just that. But I was hoping that we could have a discussion about our fleet electrification policy. We got one. Thank you. Let's do it. Okay, the other one was, you'll remember that I said in a, in a previous council meeting that there are other snowy areas in the country that utilize speed humps and to slow traffic down in neighborhoods. And I think we all know that one of the biggest complaints that we hear from neighborhoods is how fast people are moving. And so I wanted to have a discussion about maybe kind of changing our, I don't know that we have a firm policy against using speed humps, but it's always been communicated to us that we don't use them because of snow operations. And I'd like to have a discussion about that. Thank you. All right. All right, next up, we have open call to the public. Gina Marlino? And I think she probably left. Okay, DJ?
Mayor, Council. You know, when I was employed at Walmart full-time, I was doing 40 hours a week, I was serving 1,000 shoppers, 1,000 shopping carts per day. That means I was personally serving 1,000 people every single day. I did, I did have the opportunity at that time to meet Mr. Anthony Garcia. He stopped by and talked to me, actually. And he might, he might not recall, or he might recall, but I work, when I was working there, I was working right next to a flagpole in Flagstaff. Well, what ended up happening to me, because I was, my claim is that I was experienced discrimination in housing here, was I moved to Kingman, Arizona, big mistake. When I went, when I was in Kingman, Arizona, I worked there for a week. I was successfully transport, I was successfully transferred from Walmart in Flagstaff by the great people at the Walmart in Flagstaff, by the way, to the Walmart in Kingman, Arizona. And everything went correctly. I worked there for full seven days, you know. I am a selfless public servant today. I'm 38. I really am. I hope to, I hope to someday join the ranks and not be homeless anymore and find out, I can, I complete a document. Regardless, after, after seven days of working there, I was approached by Walmart management, Casey Day, and a police officer there, Officer R.A.P.P. They both pointed the finger at me. They go, he stole that, it's all on camera. They, you know what negligence looks like. I have it on camera. They both pointed, they say, he stole that, he stole that blue apron. He's trespassing. They went further to even say that I ripped off that ID badge and management, management Casey Day said that, yeah, DJ's, this isn't DJ. There's someone in Bullhead City that works at DJ, that works in Bullhead City. So he kind of like framed me on some identity fraud thing. Regardless, I have something here. I really do. And I want to live in Flagstaff. I don't think it makes sense for me to be homeless anymore. I've done 15, 15 years homeless. And similar to the murderer Shanda Vander Ark of Michigan, who was found guilty of starvation and murder of her second son, Timothy Ferguson, in 2024. She deprived her son of his rights for 15 years. She put camera systems on a refrigerator to catch her son sneaking food. Timothy died of starvation, was abused to death. I just, I know that, I know that Flagstaff has what I'm looking for. And I assure you, I'm who you're looking for. I really am. I do things correctly today. I follow the Arizona revised statutes to the best of my ability. I look forward to someday being a paralegal. I'm just asking that when I'm, when I make contact with the housing authority and, you know, and they hear my, you know, my plea for relief, which is to no longer be homeless, I just hope that I have the support of the city hall. And I guess that's all. My name's DJ and I just look forward to being a resident, a full resident someday.
DJ, would you mind leaving your contact information with staff so that we can ask housing staff to follow up with you?
Staff being?
City staff?
City staff.
To follow up with you on, on some of the things that you've mentioned tonight?
Such as? Who specifically?
Sarah Dar or someone in her office?
I haven't met Sarah Dar yet. I'm very, I'm learning, navigating the city hall very carefully. I don't want to, you know, cause any more additional problems for myself. But I will look for Sarah Dar. Is Sarah Dar in the building right now? Okay, okay.
No. Are you willing to leave your contact information?
Yes. And I'll leave my, is it, I'll leave my amended complaint that I filed in Superior Court. This has been dismissed, but I'll leave this with my, with an email address.
Great. If you just leave that with staff. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, informational items too from Mayor, Council and staff and future agenda item requests. Let's start with Councilmember Spence.
Nothing today. Thank you.
Councilmember House?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
Nada, gracias.
Councilmember Garcia?
I just wanted to remind the public that FUSD is having their board retreat tomorrow at 4:30. And I think there's some good topics on there that people might be interested in. That's it for me. Thanks.
Councilmember Matthews?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Nothing for me? City manager, nothing? All right. Well, then we are adjourned.